December 17. It says November 17 on there. December 17, 2024, meeting of the Edina City Council. Yeah, that was quickly taken down. I thought, wow, we're on the wrong holiday here coming up. So before I call the meeting officially to order, I just wanted to reiterate what Director Bennerott said, is that some folks are listening in, in a virtual way, several different ways they can do that. There's a couple of different opportunities for them to call in tonight. We've got public hearings and we've got community comment. If they're calling in, if you're calling in for community comment, I remind those in the audience as well, you'll have three minutes and you'll get a yellow warning light when you have about 30 seconds left. And then we'd like to have you wrap up your comments so that we treat everybody the same way here. And that same rule will apply to those that are calling in, that are tuning in online. And if you're here for community comment, remember you can't comment on something that's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. Otherwise, we'll be more than happy to hear your comments. And then the city manager is going to comment on remarks that were made at the prior city council meeting that were concerns of residents. And so having provided that information, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Hublin?
Here. Next matter before us is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a form of meeting agenda that's been published pursuant to our rules to the public and to our council members. Is there anyone on staff or on the council wishes to modify the agenda in any form or fashion? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved. Second?
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion on that issue? All those in favor of adoption of the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. The meeting agenda is adopted. And now we are at, folks, at community comment. I'm going to have our staff put that phone number for call-in information on the screen. And then we are going to go first to residents that are here with us this evening that wish to speak to the council on a matter of concern to them. And we have, one of our fellow residents is already up and it looks like he's maybe brought holiday treats for all of us or something. I'm not quite sure, but we'll find out.
My name is Ralph Zickert. I live at 4311 Cornelius Circle. Residents of Edina, tonight, let's talk about tax increment financing in terms a resident can understand. TIF 101, Edina's unwillingness to share. For all of you who've heard about TIF and the pages and pages upon presentation material shared with the HRA and the city council, the way Edina currently uses TIF comes down to this. TIF is Edina's cookie jar. That's a statement so fundamental to understanding Edina's current use of TIF that I'm going to say it again. TIF is Edina's cookie jar, and it's a big cookie jar. How big? Let's look at just three of Edina's 15 TIF districts. In compliance with state law, each of these districts was decertified and therefore stopped collecting the so-called incremental property tax dollars. Yet each remains open with $27 million of property tax revenue, still sequestered solely for city use, property tax dollars that long ago should have been rightfully split, one-third, 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 as acknowledged by city staff. However, as you can see, Edina's view is that these dollars should not be shared. Use it or lose it is the rallying cry. The message to residents that these funds are Edina's alone. Heaven forbid they be shared with the county or the schools. However, Minnesota State Auditor reports show that municipalities across the state decertify 70% of their TIF districts early. And when they do, all property tax revenue is once again shared with the county and the schools, as was intended by state law. Edina does no such thing. Edina keeps collecting TIF district incremental property dollars well past the date when a district might be decertified, hooked on the flow of hidden property tax revenue. And even once decertified, Edina continues to view the funds as Edina's alone. And now, in the rush to use it or lose it, Edina is offering a $3.8 million forgivable loan to a developer. In addition, the city's budget includes spending $500,000 of TIF funds in 2025 for the tunnel under France, a $30 million project. These are but two examples of the lack of vetting associated with Edina's TIF district spending, an issue worthy of a future TIF 102 discussion. Residents of Edina, I hope I found TIF 1, you've found TIF 101 helpful, and my question for you is this: Are you listening? And more importantly, is the next mayor listening? Thank you.
Concerns of residents? Okay. Anybody online? All right. Our practice is to discuss some of the issues that were raised in the prior council meeting by residents. And Mr. Neal, you want to turn your attention to some of those issues? I think I've got notes from the prior meeting, but go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had one question that we responded to. There were comments offered and other things, but the question that we were posed, that was posed to the council at the last meeting was, when an apartment building does not have a manager or on duty overnight, how are the people that live there or in the adjacent neighborhood impacted when there's an incident in the building? Our response is unless the building provides skilled nursing care or offers assisted, supported living, law, the current state law does not require around-the-clock staffing there. So there are many apartment buildings in Edina that do not have, in fact, most do not have onsite staffing. Some don't have it even in business hours, but most do not have it 24/7.
All right. I've got, there was actually another resident, I think you were out on medical leave, but she was, Janie Weston was wondering, at least I have this question down, is there some possibility we could discuss the use of TIF upfront? And I'm assuming that she means when we're in that site plan approval stage, as opposed to the sequential stage that we use now where we go through the potential site plan approval and then move on. So that might be one you want to take a look at.
From a structural or statutory standpoint, yes, that is an option. I think communities where that is the practice, there's often discussion around the council is selling their regulatory approvals to the highest bidder or to the developer because that exchange is happening so early in the process. That's why, that's why I would say most cities probably do what we do at the end stage, but legally, we could do it like that.
And for people in the audience and those that are listening at home, do you want to explain the circumstances under which our city contemplates the use of tax increment financing on a particular project and how often we use it?
We do. We contemplate using tax increment financing when there is new growth or new tax base that's created, and we can use a segment of that growth that's going to be created to produce some sort of public benefit. And we have, we take applications for this, I would say, on most of our projects, but we don't give it on most of our projects either. And we do, there's a, there's a process, there's a public hearing process that comes before the council, before awards are made. We have legal staff and financial advisory staff that also advise us on when, and when is appropriate and how it is done.
All right. And as I recall from our Economic Development Director, we use it about 10% of the projects that we, that we review. And in terms of its role in our tax capacity, it represents about 1.8% of our tax capacity when many of our neighbors are up in the 8% range.
That's right.
But we don't use it very often, and we use it carefully.
That's right.
And we do use it. Okay. All right. And it always has to have a public benefit. I think that's the key test. So, okay. I think that was the only other supplemental question I had. So we are now on to the consent agenda, and I think that member Rissler wanted to remove item 6.3 from the consent agenda, and we can do that. And is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda? First of all, let me ask, does any other council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda, other than 6.3? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of item 6.3, which we'll take up separately?
So moved. Second?
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of item 6.3, which we'll handle separately. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. The items on the consent agenda are adopted with the exception of 6.3. 6.3 has to do with a potential ordinance amendment to the city code which sets fees for, potentially sets fees for 2025. I'm going to turn now to member Rissler so we can understand her concerns. Member Rissler.
I wanted it pulled because we voted on this at our last meeting, and it was a split vote. And so now it's back, and so I thought we could just take it off and do another vote to see how that went.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I would add, Mr. Mayor, that that's consistent with council past practice on the issue. If there's something that had had a previous divided vote, we typically don't add it to the consent agenda, so.
All right. With respect to ordinance 2024-12, proposed ordinance 2024-12, which would amend Chapter 2 of the Edina City Code and adopt a fee schedule therein for 2025, is there a motion to adopt that ordinance?
So moved.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, are you moving it?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. All right. We got a motion by member Rissler, second by member Pierce, to adopt ordinance 2024-12, amending Chapter 2 of the city code setting fees for 2025. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed?
Nay.
Carried. Ordinance 2024-12 is adopted. Those fees are set for 2025 that are contained therein. All right. That completes our work on the consent portion of the agenda. And now we are on to special recognitions and presentations, which is always a nice portion of the meeting. And tonight, we've got a conversation around tree recognition campaign awards, something new in our community. And our sustainability manager, Marissa Baer, has the introduction on this matter. And we've got John Hogan with us, the Energy and Environment Commission Chair, Vice Chair. Yeah, see, in my, I thought it was Vice Chair in my head, and it says Chair on the agenda. Yeah. Just jump at the momentary opportunity here, and we're going to talk about some of the awardees here. So, Ms. Baer.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Again, Marissa Baer, Sustainability Manager. Excited to have the first inaugural award presentation for the tree recognition campaign. As the mayor noted, I'd like to invite EEC, the Energy and Environment Commission Vice Chair, John Hogan up, who will walk through the award presentation. And then we have a lot of folks in the audience tonight that we'll invite up at the end for a photo.
Thank you. Hello, everybody.
And then would you reintroduce yourself, please?
Sure. John Hogan, Energy and Environment Commission Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Forgive my casual attire, I came in hot from a basketball practice with my second grader here. All right. So this was a new initiative. We wanted to talk about trees in a way that was more celebratory, recognize some of the wonderful trees that we have in Edina. We sort of put a solicitation out for nominations, and we received 23, and we have nine trees that we've recognized for awards. This is the list. I'm not going to read it because there's photos on the next slides that are more interesting. So there are two that are in the best oak category, one at 4916 Arden and another at 5410 York. I actually know this tree, and both of these are just spectacular specimens with incredible, incredible trunks and limb features all the way up. And so they were, they were both really, it was really hard to pick one of them, and so we picked both. This one is a landmark for anyone that knows this neighborhood, 5724 Code Avenue. It's such a striking white pine. It's our best coniferous tree in Edina for 2024. The best city tree on city property is Cottonwood in Weber Park. The best tree story, and I don't remember the specifics, so I won't attempt, but it was a very moving story involving multiple generations of a family that had planted this at York Park. It's a crabapple. I also know this tree. It's in my neighborhood. It's a wonderful tree. The biodiversity award goes to the ginkgo tree at the Artisan Acres Park because it's not a very common species found in Edina. This one speaks for itself, the fall colors award. Somebody, I believe, wrote in saying they get to look at this outside of one of their windows, and I am very jealous because those colors are just amazing. This is my favorite tree in Edina. It's won the climbing tree award. For anyone that's seen this at Cohatine Park, it is amazing and very climbable. I defy you to not climb it if you go there.
We've got Bob Cohatine with us tonight. I'm going to find out if he planted that tree.
The fullest canopy award was, went to this one, which, I mean, if you just look at it, I don't think I've ever seen a more complete canopy on a maple tree. Symmetrical, it's got limbs everywhere. It was one of the more striking trees that was submitted, in my opinion. And then we grouped additional trees that we felt deserved an award into honorable mention, which we split between mature trees and young trees. There were several that were very young trees or young trees that will be very promising or are promising now and will be very spectacular one day. So it was really cool to see all the submissions, and for anyone here, thank you for participating in this and celebrating the trees that we have in Edina.
Yes. Mr. Vice Chair, thank you for doing this. It's a wonderful new endeavor, I think. Do we have folks that are the proud owners of those trees with us this evening that are ready for a group photo? I think that's what we want to do next, isn't it? Get the council down there with, have the council come down with everybody and take a group photo of the first annual tree awards. Well, that was enjoyable. Thank you again, Mr. Vice Chair, as you leave, and thank the Energy and Environment Commission as well for coming up with this idea. So that concludes this portion of the agenda, and now we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have three public hearing matters this evening. One that is being recommended for taking testimony and deferring to decision until our first meeting in January. The other two, we can potentially resolve tonight. The first one is an appeal by Scott and Elizabeth Join and Southview Design relative to a decision that was made by the planning commission to deny them a variance request on their property at 5605 Maguire Road. So Chris Ocker, our Assistant City Planner, is here to make the city portion of the presentation, and then the appellants, I assume, are here. Yes, good. Thanks for that. And their, their Southview Design partner, their landscape architect, and then we'll hear from them for a bit too, and then open it up for public testimony. Ms. Ocker, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is an appeal of a surface coverage variance for 5605 Maguire. The homeowners are appealing a denial by 853 Planning Commission vote for a 2.8% 627.5 square foot variance from the 50% maximum impervious surface allowed for a 660 square foot surface increase at 5605 Maguire, which is this house right here. The subject property is located south of Maguire Road, east of Tracy Avenue, and just north of properties that are fronting along West 70th. The property was originally built in 1956 with a tear-down rebuild of a new home in 2015, consisting of a two-story home with an attached three-car garage, an in-ground pool, and patio located behind the home, was added in 2019, or 2018. There is an access driveway, you can see that right here, that goes behind and bisects a portion of four properties that are fronting Maguire. Two of the properties at 5601 Maguire, here at the very end, and 5600 West 70th Street have their primary and only access from that private driveway. And then 5604 has this through driveway that goes from 70th to that access driveway. But it's, it can be, the property can be accessed by either that driveway access or West 70th Street. So this is the house that was rebuilt in 2015, two-story home, three-car garage, fronts, faces north, fronts Maguire. So this is looking east along that driveway access that's behind the home and the other three homes that are along Maguire. What is not very apparent is that this fence is not along their property line. Their property lines are actually on the other side of the driveway access. This is looking at the back of the home. Pool is at-grade, patio, deck. There's also a shed that is on the westerly corner of the lot. And this is the adjacent home that has their primary access that, off of the driveway, the end of the driveway access, coming off of Tracy, the home here, fronts Maguire. And this is the other home that has their primary access at the end of that long driveway from Tracy. It fronts Maguire, but the driveway loads off that driveway access. And then this is looking west, down the driveway access. And then this is that through driveway that is the other house that has access to that This is an existing conditions aerial view of the backyard, and as you can see, there's house, porch, driveway, driveway that goes up and back along that side of the garage, patio, in-ground pool, shed. There's also the AC pad and the pool equipment pad on the east side. This is an existing condition survey, very similar to what was shown in the aerial photograph. And then this is the proposal of what they would like to accomplish, which would include, in addition to the in-ground pool, they would like to have, and the existing patio, they would like to expand the patio, have paver extension, and then also some walk pads. They'll be moving the shed over to the easterly portion of the lot, so that will be removed from this side but moved over to the easterly side. So this is a landscape plan showing a colored version of the new improvements that they hope to accomplish. Now, the ordinance requires that the maximum coverage limit is 50% of all structure hardcover on the lot, which would include this driveway access along the backside or bisecting the back of their lot. It's quite long, so it does add a lot of square footage onto the amount of coverage that is currently there. So this is the existing and proposed coverage, and it gives you an idea of what the existing conditions for surface coverage. The maximum standard is 50%. The surface coverage currently, and that includes, of course, that long access driveway, is nearly at 50%. It's at 49.9%. With the addition of that 627.5 square feet or a 2.8% increase, they would be at 52.8%. And if you were not going to count that driveway, the existing coverage would be at 38.45%. That would allow an additional 971 square feet above and beyond their proposed improvements that would bring it up to 41.37%. So this is a slide showing a proposal after receiving a denial for the coverage from the planning commission on November 13th. The contractor submitted a revised plan on November 18th for a landscape permit through the engineering department to remove the access driveway that's highlighted in red to allow for additional coverage opportunity to accommodate that patio that they're hoping to accomplish. Upon reviewing the appeal letter and the decision to remove the shared driveway, engineering staff did an in-depth review and established that the shared driveway in the rear yard is within 30-foot service drive easement per an original lot certification. So removing the shared driveway will not be allowed without further documentation on vacation of the easement from all parties listed in the easement, and it appears the work being processed would trigger a stormwater management plan as well. So the landscape permit to remove the access driveway is currently on hold. With that, a case for denial and approval was made at the November 13th Planning Commission meeting with a 5-3 vote for denial. The findings for denial for the request for a 2.8% 627.5 square foot variance from the 50% maximum impervious surface requirement at 5605 Maguire Road is based on the following findings, that the proposed project does not meet the variance standards of Chapter 36 for impervious surface. The cumulative amount of proposed surface coverage is beyond the 50% of the lot area and cannot be justified based on the lot shape or the size or other unique characteristics not found in other lots. The proposal does not meet the standards for variance with no circumstances unique specific to the lot, given that there are four other properties with the same driveway access crossing their lots that are subject to the same maximum coverage requirements. The property currently has reasonable use of the property, including a house with a three-car garage with an in-ground pool, sidewalk, driveway, shed, deck, and patio. The project does not correct the impact of the driveways, hard surface, all along the back of the lot. Due to the proposed increase in coverage, the patio improvements conflict with the goals to limit coverage on properties and the policy to change, the policy to, policy change that was recently amended in 2023 to protect half- that was recently amended in 2023 to protect half the lot area for open and uncovered space. The proposed project will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The new improvements will cover over one half of the lot, or more than a half of the lot. The property owner's situation is not unique, with four other properties with the same circumstances that may require similar variances for improvements. Now, there were also findings for approval that were presented and discussed at the Planning Commission, and approval is based on the following findings: the proposed project meets the variance standards of Chapter 36 based on the practical difficulty caused by the existing driveway access that services other property and does not provide service to or needed by the applicants. The practical difficulty is caused by the existing driveway access that services other properties, and it presents opportunity to correct the impact of the driveway access along the back of the lot that is not used for the property. The access driveway benefits neighboring property, which is a practical difficulty that is unique and extraordinary circumstance of this particular property. The proposed project will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The new improvements will be behind a fenced-in rear yard not visible from the front street and are at-grade surface improvements that will not contribute to additional visible building coverage. Any approval should be subject to the plans dated October 15, 2024, the engineering staff memo, and compliance with the tree ordinance. Planning Commission action and recommendation: the Planning Commission denied the variance request on a 5-3 vote at their November 13 meeting based on findings as listed in the PowerPoint presentation on the resolution and packet. Applicants and representatives are present for questions. I believe the homeowners are present as well as the contractors. And with that, I will stop and answer questions that you may have.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Acker. Questions from staff? Yes, Member Risher.
I'm curious how many of the houses that have this drive as part of their property actually access it and use it?
Why don't you go back to that first slide? That was very helpful, I think.
It's hard to tell if the applicant is actually using the driveway, if there's connection to it.
Well, the applicant doesn't use the driveway. The only properties that use the driveway is 5601 at the very end. They front Maguire. That's their only access. 5600, that property fronts 70th, and they access -- that's their only access. They access the driveway from their garage here. And then 5604 has a through driveway. It goes from 70th to that access driveway in the back. So I guess they use it. I don't know. They also have access off of 70th.
I'm more concerned with, like, 5609. Do they use it? 5613?
They don't have a connection to it.
Okay. Who maintains the driveway?
It's a private driveway. I think that's probably a good question for the applicant.
Thank you.
The city is not maintaining it.
Other questions for -- yes, Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you, and thank you, Planner Acker, for a comprehensive overview of this. So if we could go back to the compliance table, I just want to make sure I understand how it was calculated for the surface coverage without the driveway access surface included. So are you removing the area of the alleyway driveway from both the numerator and the denominator in calculating those percentages?
It's removed from -- it's just that portion of the driveway that's covering or, you know, bisecting the back. It's not -- if I'm understanding your question.
So you're completely removing that area of the land from the calculation, and you're only calculating the percent coverage with the smaller portion of the land?
No. It's removal from the entire portion of the lot, because that is their lot. I did not look at, you know, trying to calculate that portion out of it, the portion of the lot out of it. It's just taking the driveway off that property in the calculation.
Can I help clarify?
So the lot area remains the same in the calculation.
The lot size stays the same in both calculations?
Correct.
That's the question?
Yes.
Just taking the impervious off?
Just taking the impervious off.
Okay.
The lot size has not changed. We're not changing -- we're not looking at a difference in lot size.
Okay. So I'll probably do some quick math. Do we know what the area is of the alleyway? Because where I'm going with this, right, is I want to understand what the calculation would be, not saying this is a possibility, but if they were to sell, right, that piece of land. So if that piece of land were no longer a part of their property, what would these percentages be, is what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, and I don't -- I do not have that information in terms of -- I mean, the lot area currently is over 22,000 square feet, and I guess it just depends upon what the width of that driveway is and the length.
So I see 1,346 square feet is the percentage of the driveway, but that might just be the red area and not the entirety of the driveway? Sorry, that's just really small.
It is.
Is -- so 2547, I think, is the driveway in totality?
Correct. And then I think the red portion is what they're highlighting in the box.
Okay. And so then the property total impervious surface. Okay. I'll do some calculation in the background. Y'all can ask other questions that you might have.
Other questions from councilmembers for Ms. Acker? Okay. Yeah, you were heading in an interesting direction here. In fact, I was going to ask the city attorney a couple of different questions related to that. One related to the same issue that Member Agnew's raising, and that is, when you have an easement that serves a neck lot like this, at least I'll call it a neck lot, because it only -- that roadway only exists to go to the next-door neighbor. What is it, 5601?
Correct.
So everybody else has got an easement on it, but it's a privately-owned driveway over somebody else's property. They've got the easement. I guess they hold the easement over their -- over 5605's property. If 5605 were to deed that portion of the roadway behind their property, or that sits on their property to 5601, is -- that's a possibility, isn't it?
I think it could be, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, Mayor, I don't know all the details. It's possible that, you know, it sounds like a number of parties have rights to this easement, so you'd probably need consent from a number of those parties to modify it or extinguish it, but it would be possible. I don't know whose consent would be required.
Are you saying that they would need consent to even sell what's behind them?
Well, maybe not if they were going to maintain the easement in place. I'm just saying that any number of these properties, even though it looks like a lot of them don't necessarily utilize it, they may have rights to utilize it. So if they were still to have those rights in the after condition after a hypothetical sale, then it would probably be possible.
With respect to -- this is a broader sort of question, because I -- I'll call this -- I don't know if Director Teague would call this a neck lot or not, but I've seen this a few times in my time on the City Council where a long drive is imposed, you know, off of a main city street to serve a lot that's way interior to a development, and the only real beneficiary of it is the entity that holds the ownership of the neck lot. And so they've got an easement to go over everybody else's property to get back to their property. And I don't even know where I'm going with this, but are there -- are there any -- are there any issues around neck lots and the creation of driveways to serve neck lots that may be influential on our decision-making process here that you can think of, based on your knowledge as a case law around situations like this?
Well, Mayor, so I think you should apply the standards for variance, and that would include uniqueness. So, you know, uniqueness has to do with the physical characteristics of the property. One of the physical characteristics of this property is that it has an easement on it that serves other properties, so you could take that into account for the uniqueness factor of the practical difficulties test for variance.
Okay. That helps. Thank you. Member Agnew, did that cause you to think of anything else as a follow-on from what you were asking about, or did you get your math work done?
I have, like, one more calculation to do.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Acker. And we've got the applicants with us this evening, Mr. and Mrs. Join, Scott and Elizabeth Join, from 5605 Maguire Road. And please come up, either you folks come up or come up with your landscape, and we can talk about your appeal and hear your presentation.
Do you have a presentation?
No, I was just going to use the same one that Chris had, something we had before. So I'm Josh Koller with Southview Design, so I put the plan together here. A couple things on this, if I can move the slideshow real quick, and I can answer your questions on the hardcover, even though I don't -- I brought my computer. I won't open up the CAD program, but a couple of quick things here. One, to me, this is the exact definition of what -- why you would have a, you know, why we could get something like this passed, is because this is a, you know, this is a county easement, so this wasn't something that the homeowners used. We don't use it at all. But to answer your quick question on the math, if I go to the plan here.
I got 47%.
I did these calculations from the first time we met. So this is the client's property, is this fence right here, right? And then the road goes across their property line, and it goes all the way back to this white fence. So when you look at that, if they own -- they have the property here, and this whole road was gone, even with the added surface, I think we have 2,500 square feet or something close to that is what that road is, we're talking about adding 630 or 640 square feet. So if they own the property and the road wasn't there, because they don't use it, they don't need it, they don't want it, then we'd be well under the hardcover. If you just -- because we just did this, and I was curious, let's say they just -- their property ended at the edge of this road. We would be under the 50% hardcover if their property just ended and we did our new patio portion. So let's just say it just stopped kind of where their fence is right there, and then that wasn't even theirs. Not to say that that's what they want to do, but we would be under the 50%. So to me, this is the most unique situation. I do a ton of these variances all over the Twin Cities. I don't -- I don't -- for me, it's difficult to understand how this isn't considered a unique situation due to that. There's three people access it, and if I go to the survey here also, so if you -- oops, sorry. So even the property on this side, where they just have a through driveway just for access purposes, they have a good chunk of their driveway even goes on to my client's property just to access the alleyway. So again, it's -- it just seems to me like there's just a number of things. And then a couple of other things. I know that when they did the rebuild of the house, there was a setback, which then required the driveway to be even extended longer than if the house was pushed forward. So you can imagine if the house was pushed forward a little bit, they wouldn't have such a long driveway, which in turn would then allow us to have a little more patio space for their pool. And it might look big on the plan, but it's a fairly small pool deck when you consider you're trying to just walk around it, and by the time you put a table on here, there's a lot of room here. So everything, you know, on this end of it, that's what we're just trying to improve. But again, just going back to the -- what we're looking to adjust, you can see the neighbor's driveway that also goes on to our client's property here, and then also on this corner, and then this whole road. Yeah, just -- so those are the -- when you were asking about the hardcover questions, yeah, if the property ended right at the edge of that road and we still did this improvement, we would be under your hardcover. Yep.
All right.
Any questions for me?
Yeah, that's -- any questions for -- okay, yes, please, folks, come on up.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth. This is Scott, and we are the owners at 5605 Maguire. We've been there for 12 years. And we are here tonight because we want to appeal the decision by the Planning Commission that denied the variance request for our property. We were discouraged by how the Planning Commission made its decision. We feel they lost sight of the main issue and instead offered personal opinions on what we have, what we need, or how to store and arrange items in our yard. They failed to adequately consider the unique reality of our property, that our neighbor's driveway crosses our lot and accounts for over 20% of our, not their, allowed hardscape coverage. Every aspect of our house, yard, and lot is both constrained by and in compliance with city codes and ordinances. In 2023, the city ordinance for hardscape coverage was changed. No longer are the types of hardscape considered. Rather, each property is simply given a flat percentage allotment, 50%. This new ordinance disproportionately affects our property in several key ways. First, the driveway. We have a long driveway, but like Josh said, the length of that driveway is dictated by city setback rules. Some homes in Edina have very short driveways. We happen to have a long one, because the homes on our block are set back quite a ways from the street. We had no choice but to match that setback. Driveways were formerly not included in hardscape totals, but they are now, so our property is more impacted than properties where homes sit closer to the road. Second, our pool deck. We added a pool to the property in 2019. A four-foot surrounding pool deck was required by the city for safety. We added a modest amount of additional patio space with that pool deck, but we always planned to add more once we had the pool for a few years and could see how we really used the space. The required four-foot pool deck was formerly not included in hardscape totals, but now it is. Finally, our neighbor's driveway. This is the unique reality that makes a variance necessary. As you've seen, two of our neighbors have a shared driveway that cuts across the lots of several homes on the block. This driveway, though private, is their only public street access. The span of their driveway that traverses our lot covers 2,574 square feet. Since driveways are now included in hardscape calculations, our particular property is disproportionately affected because our neighbor's driveway accounts for 22.8% of our allotted hardscape coverage. Our neighbor's driveway is the unique reality of our property that the Planning Commission failed to adequately consider in the decision to deny our variance request. That driveway cuts across our lot and yet is not at all ours. We neither use it nor maintain it, but over 20% of our allowed coverage is consumed by it. We are looking for a variance to allow for only 2.9% of additional hardscape coverage. Without a variance, we're faced with the absurd choice of determining whether or not to dig up a portion of our neighbor's street access in order to comply with the city ordinance. If a variance doesn't apply in this situation, we can't imagine when it would ever apply. We urge you to overrule the Planning Commission's decision. We want to be able to move ahead with our project, to add value to our property, to plant a variety of new trees and plants on our lot, to increase our ability to continue to host family, friend, and community gatherings. We also want to continue to be good and considerate neighbors. Please approve our variance request and allow us to proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Join. Mr. Join?
What she said, but we can answer any questions you might have for us also.
Yeah, thank you. Smart guy. Oh, Member Risher.
My question was answered when you said you neither use nor maintain it. So who does maintain it?
Two end houses.
The two end houses. Thank you.
And Bragno, any questions?
No. No, thank you.
You want to follow up on your question, whether they entertain -- did they ever entertain selling it?
I don't -- how would they sell it? Like, I just don't know that that's even...
That's already infringing on them.
Yeah.
I don't know. Easy on them.
And in my calculations, I did, and I conferred with Director Milner as well, it was 47%. So if we remove that portion of the property, it would be under the 50%. So just wanted to close the loop on that.
Okay. Yeah, Member Jackson has a question.
Yeah, so tell us a little bit about the runoff basin that you're proposing, because I think the purpose of having the pervious surface is not to have the water run out and flood the neighborhood. and flood the neighbor's property. And so I was, and Ms. Acker, you spoke about the visual and the aesthetics of what it looked like, but we didn't talk about the effect of the water. So tell me what the change would be for the runoff if we approve this. Will there be more runoff? Will there be less runoff?
Well, you would, you would, sorry. Yeah, you would add a little bit of hardcover, so I suppose there would be a little bit of runoff, but I've got landscaping surrounding the whole area as well. So we can also mitigate water by adding some different basins. We've done that in Edina quite often on other projects. There's obviously a cost to that. But, and there's different wells and things that you can do for that. But in this particular instance, I mean, everything still is surrounded by softscapes, so I, I mean, you're still allowing water to percolate down into the water table around the entirety of the pool and the pool deck.
Member Jackson, I can add to that. This would require a stormwater permit through the engineering department, and we sent an email to the applicants and the landscapers.
We actually are getting that back.
So we'll work with them on addressing that, that question of yours.
Okay, so, so it won't increase the stormwater within standards?
Or they'll have to address it with some kind of mechanism like you just mentioned.
Okay, good, thank you. That answers my question.
Other questions at this point in time for the applicant or their landscaper or staff? Okay, stand by, folks. Thank you. This is a public hearing matter, I'm gonna open it up for public testimony, and see if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding this matter. All right, I'm not hearing anything or seeing anybody come forward. Do we have anybody online that wishes to testify?
I don't, but because the, the hearing just opened, I would recommend we wait a minute before moving on to give people a chance to dial in if, if they're so inclined. My clock shows that it's 7:55, so I will come back to you at 7:56, or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
All right, thanks. And Ms. Acker, your suggestion as, as staff, as lead staff on this matter is to close the in-person portion of the public hearing this evening, but keep the online public input portion of the matter open until Sunday, December 29, 2024, and continue the action item to the January 7, 2025 city council meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. All right, very good. Is there a council member that wishes to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Member Pierce moves, and Member Agnew seconds the closure of the in-person portion of the public hearing in this matter, this evening, and keep the online public portion of the hearing open, portion of the matter open until Sunday, December 29, 2024, and continue the action on the item to the January 7, 2025 city council meeting. Any further discussion on the motion as stated? Those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Motion's approved, and folks can submit anything they want, including the applicant to the council, and we'll take the matter up at the January 7, 2025 city council meeting for a decision. And now we have the second of three public hearing matters, the next two, our Director of Engineering Chad Milner has them, and they both involve potential vacation of right-of-way easements, one over on Mait Lane and one on France Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, yeah, you'll have a consideration of 5805 Mait Lane this evening, embodied in Resolution 2024-117. So this was an interesting findings on this one. The property was for sale recently, and during those negotiations, they found that the previous owner had submitted an application to vacate some easements and create new easements. They were signed but never approved by the city council and never recorded at Hennepin County. In the early 2000s, when they thought they were done, they built the pool structure that you see in the right-hand picture, where those easements go right through the pool structure, that were never officially recorded at the county. So then now the new owner says, can we get this all cleaned up? And that's why we're here this evening. So they're wanting to vacate that easement that's shown on the left-hand graphic, or shown in red on the right-hand side. We have no issues with it, we've got no utilities there, private utilities have no problems, and the owner is going to provide new easements for those private utility companies where they exist today, where there's no easements. So we would, we didn't receive any comments on Better Together Edina, and we would recommend approving this easement vacation and approving that resolution this evening, Resolution 2024-117. And I'll stand for any questions.
All right, questions for Director Milner on this matter? All right, this is a public hearing matter, stand by Director Milner. I'm gonna open this now up for public testimony. Is there anyone here from, from that particular property or the adjoining properties on Mait Lane wishes to comment? Okay. The public hearing is open? It's open to anybody that wants to testify regarding this proposed matter. I'll turn now to Director Benarot, see if we have anybody online.
I don't have anyone online. Again, I'd, I'd recommend we wait one minute, just to make sure that no one is trying to call in. That's a lot of numbers to key in on your telephone keypad. My clock shows that it's 7:59, so I will come back to you at 8 o'clock, or when I It has now been a minute, and I still don't have a caller, so I think it is safe for you to move forward with the agenda.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing in this matter involving Resolution 2024-117?
So moved. Becca.
Member Agnew moves, Member Jackson seconds the closure of the public hearing in this matter involving Resolution 2024-117. Any further discussion, those in favor of closing the public hearing in this matter, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Public hearing is closed. Director Milner, you would like us to approve this evening the adoption of Resolution 2024-117, which would vacate the right-of-way easement at 5805 Mait Lane running through those folks' swimming pool.
That is correct.
All right, very good. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-117, which would vacate the right-of-way easement at 5805 Mait Lane. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Resolution 2024-117 is adopted. Director Milner?
Thank you, Mayor. We have another vacation here, request at 7250 France Avenue, embodied in Resolution This is the parcel, the property owner has requested a vacation of an easement along the north property line. It's a 10-foot easement that was part of the original plat. And as you have aware, that you guys approved a project there, a development project, and that easement now is in within that project, and they are nearly ready to pull permits. So we need to consider vacating that easement so they can move forward with their project. We have no issues, we don't have any utilities in there, we don't see any future utilities needs there, and the private utility companies agree that they don't have any concerns with vacating that easement. We're also getting new easements with that development project. We received no comments on Better Together Edina, and again, we'd recommend vacating the requested easements and approve Resolution 2024-116. Be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Director Milner on, on 2024-116 involving 7250 France Avenue? Stand by Director Milner, we're gonna open this matter up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding the proposed matter? Potential vacation of the right-of-way at 7250? All right, seeing no one coming forward, hearing nothing, is there anyone online that wishes to testify?
No, sir. I really need to get some, like, music going. I would recommend we wait another minute. My clock shows that it's 8:03, I'll come back to you at 8:04, or when I have a caller, whichever is first. It has now been a minute, and I still don't have a caller, so I think it's safe to move on.
All right, very good. So Director Milner is requesting that the council approve Resolution 2024-116 this evening, which would vacate the right-of-way easement at 7250 France Avenue. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves, Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-116, which would vacate the right-of-way easement at 7250 France Avenue. Any further discussion, all those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2024-116, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Resolution's adopted, and the right-of-way easement at 7250 France Avenue is hereby vacated. All right, very good. Thank you, Director Milner. Next matter we have is something that we're fortunate, we have every couple of weeks, and that is we have donations to the city that we need to accept from these generous donors, and those, those donations are embodied in Resolution 2024-118. Is there a motion to accept the donations embodied in Resolution 2024-118 on behalf of the city of Edina?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves, Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-118, which accepts certain defined donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the Resolution 2024-118, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Resolution 2024-118 is adopted, and I can tell folks that we will post these donors' names up on the city website. The Edina Senior Center got some very generous donations, $2,000 from Friends of the Edina Library, I suspect those are proceeds from the book sale that they run, I think, a couple of times a year. One of our former employees, Donna Tilsner, worked for the city, donated money, as well as Susan and Thomas Gerhardt, Janie Hayes, and Moments Hospice gave some in-kind donation. And then for the Juneteenth celebration, Friends of the Edina Library also donated $1,600, which was terrific. And then the Edina Fire Department got a generous donation from Troy and Susan Pereira. So, thanks, folks, for those generous donations, and we will move on to the next matter in this portion of the agenda, and we are back with Marissa Baer, our Sustainability Manager, who wants us to think about approving the ordinance, which would amend the efficient building benchmarking ordinance that we have in the city of Edina.
Good evening again.
Manager Baer, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So I'm here tonight to talk through the Efficient Buildings Ordinance update, and recommended changes to continue to offer benchmarking in Edina, as well as align with us the new state program that'll be coming out next year. Just briefly, I'll give you a little bit of overview of Edina's existing program, the forthcoming statewide benchmarking program, and then the alignment that needs to be made between the state and local program to continue to offer benchmarking. So just briefly, a background on Edina's current program. The ordinance was adopted in 2021 to establish a benchmarking program, which supports our climate action plan goals to increase building efficiency. The ordinance covers 268 buildings in Edina. Of those 268, there are 19 city buildings that are affected. And what the ordinance does is it requires buildings 25,000 square feet and above to annually benchmark their energy and water use. They do that through EnergyStar Portfolio Manager, which is a free software, to report that data, and then we are able to gather that data as well. As part of the ordinance, we also require an energy assessment requirement, which says for buildings based on that benchmarking data with demonstrated energy efficiency improvements, we require them to get an energy assessment, which is covered, the co-pays covered by the city of Edina. That assessment provides information on efficiency opportunities, but doesn't actually require those upgrades, it just provides that information to them. In 2023, the Minnesota Legislature passed a statewide benchmarking bill, which creates a statewide program to annually benchmark buildings across the state of Minnesota. This program's gonna be launching next year in 2025. It applies to buildings in Hennepin County that are 50,000 square feet larger, as well as other metro area counties, and then some greater Minnesota cities of certain population size and certain building sizes. As noted, it applies to Class 1 properties, which are defined as 100,000 square feet and above, and then Class 2 properties, 50,000 to just under 100,000 square feet. What statute also allows is for local governments to continue to implement their own local program, but gives power to the Department of Commerce, which is the managing state agency, to coordinate local programs. And what it does is it says, if you are going to offer a local program, you have to be equivalent to statute, or more stringent than the statewide program. And so what needs to be done is amendments to local programs to align with that state statute. As we look at the effective buildings, so I use kind of Class 1, Class 2, just to provide some context, so there are three building classes in Edina's ordinance, which are Class 1, 100,000 square feet, those are larger buildings, Class 2, 58,000 to 100,000, and then Class 3, which are those smaller buildings, 25,000 to just under 50. The Class 1 and Class 2 buildings have a state program participation requirement, whereas those smaller buildings, Class 3, do not have to participate. About 95 buildings in Edina fall into that Class 3 categorization. So to continue to offer our local program, the state of Minnesota does require ordinance to be amended to offer that program. There are some, as documented in the ordinance, redline changes, we worked with the city attorney as well as talking with the state of Minnesota about changes that need to be made. The major impact for Edina's ordinance would be that we have to now provide building disclosure materials for those buildings to publicly display if they so want. We have to update our exemption criteria, which includes additional exemptions for properties that have been slated for demolition, or haven't received energy services for at least 30 days. Also includes requirement for sellers to provide benchmarking data if the property is transferred, or provide login tool for those new owners, and then also include a syllifying as an alternative penalty for noncompliance with benchmarking. And these are items that we currently do not have in ordinance that are documented in that draft. As noted, we have to make these changes if we want to continue to offer a local program. There are other cities do offer local programs, so as part of my work here, I've talked with the other communities, so there are five cities that currently offer local benchmarking programs, Bloomington, St. Louis Park, St. Paul, Rochester, and Minneapolis. Four of those cities, so Bloomington, St. Louis Park, St. Paul, and Rochester have decided to hand off their program to the state of Minnesota effective next year, and will no longer manage any local benchmarking program. Minneapolis will be maintaining their local benchmarking program, which currently only requires buildings 50,000 square feet and above to comply, and they're working with the state to similarly update their ordinance to comply, so they continue to offer that local program. In this, we've also chatted with the Energy Environment Commission, this is an initial idea that came up from them before it came to ordinance, and at their November meeting, shared with them the forthcoming changes. They've expressed a desire to continue to require those smaller buildings, so that Class 3, less than 50,000 square feet buildings, to benchmark and participate in a program, which aren't covered by the state program, and they are supportive of the state managing those larger building classes, which are Class 1 and Class 2. So what the recommended ordinance amendments that I've documented, the first is removing Class 1 and Class 2 from local ordinance. Class 1 and Class 2 from local ordinance, which would allow us to hand off the management of benchmarking to the state agencies. So it would be the Department of Commerce who would then manage the benchmarking for those buildings. That change, if approved, would result in budget and staff time changes, because our scope would be smaller with the current vendor that we work with. And then also would be creating some consistency with buildings of this size across the metro area, where we know some of our peer communities, who today currently benchmark, we know next year that they're not going to be requiring, and will be also benchmarking with the state. The second change is amending the ordinance to include state requirements for Class 3 buildings. So this is the alignment that we need to continue to require Class 3 buildings to participate, and then also would allow them to continue to benchmark. Because they're not covered by the state program, they're not allowed to go to the state, so they would have to stay locally or just not benchmark at all if there's no local ordinance. And then that would also, if we do move forward with this change, continues Edina's sustainability leadership, as we would be the only city in the metro area currently to continue to require benchmarking for that building class. So the recommended action in front of you is to approve Ordinance 2024-13, which would amend the Efficient Building Benchmarking Chapter, grant first reading, and waive second reading. And I can answer any questions about that benchmarking program.
Thank you, Manager Baer. I think there's a few questions up here. I'm going to start with Member Jackson.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Manager Baer. This is very thorough, and interesting to see the state following what we've done. It's pretty exciting. But I do have some questions. You talked about noncompliance in your report, that of the buildings that we've got, I can't remember now, I can't find the percentage, we have a certain percentage of buildings in Edina who are not in compliance with our benchmarking currently. Of those buildings, how many of them are in the Class 3 that would be continue under city guidance?
Yes. So of all buildings, so of the 268, we have a noncompliance, which is they didn't benchmark their buildings of 10%. That's about 28 buildings. Of that 28, 16 of them are those Class 3, that's smaller, less than 50,000 square foot building, and that represents about 17% of just that building class. So 17% of the 95 buildings in Class 3 were noncompliant with the benchmarking policy last year.
Okay. Thank you. And one of the things that I caught in your presentation that I didn't catch in reading the report is that the change to the ordinance would require us to have a fine then, or a penalty, for people who are noncompliant. Is that correct?
Yes.
Did we reach out to these Class 3 buildings and talk to them at all about what their reaction to this would be? Both positively, do they enjoy having the hands-on local treatment to help them figure it out, and then also their reaction to this proposed fine?
We did not engage the building owners on their reaction to the program or the fine possibility.
And what does the fine look like?
So the statute requires if you are to operate a local ordinance, you have to have a civil penalty as one of the enforcement mechanisms for noncompliance. Our current ordinance does not have that, so that was one of the required additions we had to make. The fine would be $1,000, as set by statute.
$1,000 each year?
Yep, for each year of noncompliance. So if they were noncompliant for five years in a row, the city would have the option to be able to enforce that fine if we would so choose.
Okay. And right now, it's just basically counseling them on opportunities to reduce their energy use?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I remember when we did that, we didn't have the authority to have any sort of other types of compliance tools. So what would happen to, you said that there'd be some cost savings. What, currently, we're paying $42,000 a year for the contractor, so it's approximately $54,000 total for this program. What would that look like after we adopt this ordinance as written?
We don't know the exact scope number that would be available in 2025, but we can assume it would be less than the $54,000 we paid this year, because it's a smaller scope. We'd be removing about 2/3 of the buildings that would be covered, that would need help desk support, energy assessment support, and that's where the majority of that funding goes, is towards that help desk. So because they would only have to cover a much smaller set of buildings, we can safely assume the total contract amount would be less, but we don't know what the fee would be yet. But that would be something we would bring forward next year.
And is that charged on an as-used basis, or on an estimation of how much services they'd have to give us? So it's a, I'm going to make up numbers. To service Class 3 buildings in Edina, it's going to cost you $20,000 now instead of the $42,000, because it's fewer. And whether they have to service them or not, it would still be $20,000.
Correct. Yeah, it's a flat fee that we pay to make the help desk available, and then that also covers the review of all of the property data as well.
Okay. And so when they review the property data, that's for compliance. That's not, we don't get a report out, do we, on how much energy we've been saving?
We do. So we, in addition to the Touchstone IQ, which is the vendor, they review the data, they do all of the data quality checks. So if there's a trend to say, hey, building A, your energy use is 10% lower than it was last year, is there a data issue? If not, can you explain what had happened to justify it? So they do have a pretty thorough data quality, data assurance process that they implement for every building. And then once all of the data is submitted, reviewed, they submit basically a total output of everything that's been entered to the city, so we can see the data that buildings are submitted. We can slice and dice it as we can see for that total consumption, and can compare year over year to see if there are opportunities or energy savings. So yeah, they do provide that information to us.
And then do we upload that information onto our environmental dashboard at any point in time?
Yep, so we can make, we make available the compliance, the data, and then there is an online map as well, so you can enter a property address, who has to benchmark in Edina, and you can see what their energy score is, how they benchmark to other buildings, and you can also select multiple buildings to benchmark to each other, so it is all publicly available to the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Member Jackson covered many of my questions, so I have two. Just to clarify, for Class 1 and Class 2 buildings, it sounds like the benefit of that program with the state actually managing the data, the difference to us for Class 1 and Class 2 is negligible. We still get the same data. We can still make the same recommendations that we would. We can still follow up with those businesses to request that they make changes. So I think that's good. Is there, are there any fees from the state back to the city for that?
There's no cost to cities for the implementation.
Okay. And then the last question. In the staff report, where you talk about handing off the program to Class 1 and Class 2, and then you list the change, all of those changes, to me, are more kind of procedural or process-related. So my question is, are there any benefits from an environment perspective by moving to this new, by accepting this ordinance and moving Class 1 and Class 2 to the state?
Nonmeasurable right-of-way. I think what we potentially could see, it's a new program with statewide management. There's additional state resources to support those buildings, engage with buildings, but there's currently no measurable data that we have to say if we hand off to the state, we will increase energy efficiency or save a certain amount of greenhouse gas emissions, but we can assume would be consistent continued benchmarking.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good. I don't think we have any other questions up here. Let me turn to my colleagues now and see, with respect to the recommended changes in Ordinance 2024-13, as proposed by staff and the Energy and Environment Commission, they would amend the efficient building ordinance that we presently have in place with respect to the notion of benchmarking. Is there anyone who cares to make a motion to adopt the Ordinance 2024-13 in its amended form, covering the efficient building benchmarking and waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion, the second, to approve Ordinance 2024-13, amending the efficient building benchmarking ordinance and grant first reading and waive second reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Ordinance 2024-13 is approved, and first reading is granted, and second reading is waived. Thank you, Manager Baer. All right. Now, we've got a few more things on the agenda that have consequence and significance for us from a conversation standpoint. The next matter we have is Director Teague's, and it is going to be a conversation amongst council members about the proposed use of the property, what we know as the Kevin Keyes site. And it's embodied in a couple of different forms of resolution. One form of resolution requires a comprehensive plan amendment on a four-fifth vote, and then if that were approved, we have to address the rezoning and site plan variances. All of this at the official address for Kevin Keyes' property at 6016 Vernon Avenue. I'll turn now to our Community Development Director, Carrie Teague.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This request is made by Jake Schaefer of Station Pizza. They have an existing restaurant in Minnetonka. The proposal is to remodel and expand that existing Keyes auto body that hasn't been in use for a couple of years now to a little over 1,600 square foot, 20-seat restaurant. They would also have takeout and delivery. This request requires a comprehensive plan amendment from medium-density residential to neighborhood commercial, which would be a new classification in the comprehensive plan, a rezoning from Plan Commercial District 4 to Plan Commercial District 1. There are a number of variances, first along with that rezoning, to allow a restaurant under an acre in size, and a site plan with a number of variances. This is a project that the council has complete discretion to approve or deny. There are resolutions to that effect for both approval and denial before you to consider. There has been a lot of feedback on Better Together, just under 200 comments. I usually don't tally them up, but when there's that many, just for information, I know you're not making a decision based on number of votes, but there were 127 for the project and 60 against. Those opposed to the project probably live a little closer in proximity, though there are some in the neighborhood that support the project as well. Those in favor, again, number of comments, but to just summarize, those for the project feel it would be a good fit, a neighborhood gathering space, a walkable place to bring their family for a restaurant, and there's a void of restaurants in this part of Edina. Those opposed would like to see housing on the site, that this is not a good site for commercial. There potentially would be a lack of parking, traffic concerns, noise, odor, concern about future commercial use of the property. Again, two alternatives in front of the council for consideration. Both the staff and the planning commission are recommending approval. The planning commission vote was eight to zero. And again, as the mayor mentioned, it's a, there are two separate motions. The first, for the comprehensive plan amendment that requires the four-fifths vote. The applicants are here this evening, as well as the architect, to answer any questions you may have. I'll turn it back to the council for your discussion.
Yeah, thank Director Teague. Let me first of all check to see if anybody has any questions for you on a council basis. Member Rissler has a question, and so does Member Jackson.
I'm curious, I thought that people who are opposed were also concerned about safety, and that was not something that you noted, and I'm just wondering if that was there.
Yep, yep, that's certainly true. Safety in regards to the traffic pedestrian movement, that was a concern, yes.
Thank you. That's it, Member Rissler? That was your only question? Okay. Member Jackson.
So, Mr. Teague, I have a number of questions about the types of conditions that we might, may or may not be able to add to this. The first thing I want to do is, you've had experience in approving restaurants and analyzing them over the years, and we used to have a standard of how many seats in a room, and now it's the square footage. Is there any way, how would you, if we were looking at this from a square footage, how could I translate that? Is, with the image we saw was for 12, but is that reasonable? Would it be bigger? How can I think about that?
Yeah, in terms of that, I don't recall what they label it on the plans, but the, kind of that party room off to the side, I believe they showed 12 seats there. I checked with our fire marshal to find out what the seating capacity in a space like that would be, and he indicated it would be 15 or 16, so not much over the 12 that are indicated on that plan.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm just going to go through a list of possible conditions and tell me whether this is something we could ask for. I did some asking with Attorney Kendall, and we can't, if the fire department and police department go in and say it's okay to have a liquor license, we can't really turn it down. But can we, if they were to apply for a liquor license later on, could we limit it to wine
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But if they, if they wanted to apply for a full liquor license, could we limit it to wine and beer, or could we put that as a condition of approval?
Councilmember Jackson, from a land use and zoning standpoint, I don't think that would be a condition that you could impose. I think, I don't know if Clerk Allison wants to weigh in on different types of liquor licenses and whether they'd be available in this location, but generally, I would not recommend, you know, denying a liquor license that they would otherwise be eligible for just based on concerns about potential problems. I mean, certainly if there were actual problems related to liquor service on the property, the council could take actions, then revoke their license, their police calls or other issues, but I wouldn't recommend preemptively denying a license that they would otherwise be entitled to. I don't know if they'd be entitled to a full liquor license on this site. Clerk Allison seems to think they would be.
They would be entitled to a full intox license or a wine license.
Okay. Thank you. My next question is, is there some way we can limit the noise outdoors and prevent music from being played outside?
It would be subject to our noise ordinance. I might turn to Attorney Kendall to see if that is a condition that we could place on this, just given it's, we do have other similarly zoned properties in close proximity to residential as well.
Yeah, I think they'd be subject to, you know, the noise ordinance, any nuisance standards that applied. If it were conditional use, you could require a fence as a condition of approval. I don't think this would be a conditional use. This would be a permitted use if the zoning is changed to allow this use. You could certainly ask them to put up a fence to mitigate noise, but, you know, whatever noise ordinance requirements would be for hours of outdoor amplified music, that's what they would be subject to.
And they are, there is a six-foot cedar fence that's proposed, wood fence along the north and west lot line. That is one of the conditions of approval that they follow through on that.
Okay. So that was one of my other questions, is to keep the fence along there. Okay. Can we put a condition to have the lighting going down only?
We can. It's in current city code. Our lighting standards require that, but that would be a condition that they have to meet city code to emphasize that point.
Okay. Let's see. So we have a problem over at 50th and France of a neighbor not appreciating the fan that's across the way that, from, I think it's Bellicourt. Is there a way we can put a condition on this to have a high-end type of fan so that smells and sounds don't go out into the neighborhood?
I believe that we could do that. Typically, when we've gotten those complaints in the past, staff works with the property owner, the restaurant, and they're usually come into compliance or do some things to minimize those. But I believe that's a condition that we could add.
Okay. Thank you. Can we make it a condition that the ingress and egress is only off of Vernon? I know that's what they're planning, but if we, we could prevent it from being changed in the future?
That seems a reasonable condition as well.
I mean, as opposed to having a driveway or access off Eden Prairie Road?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Correct, yeah, yeah. Putting a condition that the driveways remain on Vernon and not be on Eden Prairie Road, yeah. Can we require them to put in bike racks?
We do have a city code standard for that. They are proposing bike racks on the north side of the building.
Okay, so that's taken care of then.
Member Jackson, I just want to address that previous one. I don't know if they, they're not currently applying to receive any access off of Eden Prairie Road. I don't know if they have even the potential or the option for access off Eden Prairie Road, but I don't know that you could make it a condition that they could never apply for that, if they, if indeed they potentially could have legal access. If they did apply for it, the city could look at whether it would be appropriate and whatever standards apply, and could potentially deny it if it's not appropriate, but I don't think you can require them never to apply for it.
Okay, that, that makes sense. So Hello Pizza is able to operate without a liquor license and turnover, is that by operation of their business, or is there any kind of zoning restriction on, on how they run their business?
There's no zoning restrictions on that one.
Okay, all right. Those are my questions, thank you.
Actually, can I add one clarification?
Please.
If I remember from their presentation that they're only planning on having 22 seats in the restaurant, that would not qualify for a full intox, because our requirement is 30 seats in a restaurant, so I wanted to add that clarification.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
Yes.
Beer and wine? Beer and wine, they could have liquor.
Beer and wine would be the same, too, yes. It's a minimum of 30 seats.
To have any kind of liquor?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
Member Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, we also had exchange, and I think, again, Member Jackson covered a few of the ones that I had asked, but I wanted to maybe put a finer point on a couple of those asked. And so if a variance can be applied for, for some of those differences, my question is, do we have grounds for denial? And are we, as a council, are we at risk if we were to deny a particular variance, whether it's with Station Pizza or a new restaurant? Are we at risk of being sued, I guess, is the question?
Yeah, I can take a swing at it, and Attorney Kendall can add, but we couldn't bind a future planning commissioner, city council to not grant variances. They would have the ability to come in and make that request. It would be up to the planning commission or, and/or council at that time to make that decision on a variance.
Okay.
But, Member Pierce, with respect to this application, you do have discretion on this, both to deny the comprehensive plan amendment, you have wide discretion on that, and also latitude to deny the variance applications as well.
Well, and so it's an example for the liquor license, would we have grounds for denying a liquor license?
Well, there would be separate grounds, not related specifically to this site, but if, if the council felt that there were enough liquor licenses in the city or in this area that no further licenses were warranted for any applicant, but not just for this site, you could deny it on that basis potentially. You can deny the individual variance applications, you know, regarding setbacks and other aspects of this property, if you don't feel they meet the practical difficulties, legal standard.
And I do understand the point you made earlier about binding a future planning commission or council. So if those issues did come before council as variances, then the council would have to deliberate and decide what they think is appropriate. And so I think the, the list of questions I sent earlier are all geared towards trying to strike this balance of hearing what the most immediate neighbors, some of their concerns, and actually, the, the original restaurant. And so I'm kind of thinking in totality across all of these, and trying to think about how you can strike the balance of providing a need that, or a desire that many of the neighbors expressed, and then trying to strike a balance in terms of protecting the needs and desires of those that are most impacted. And so I think that was the gist of the questions that I had asked. And so you covered the one on number of seats. You covered the one on size. The last one I had, which was partially covered, was Eden Prairie Road, but I had a different ask there. And so there was a, another resident who was concerned about overflow, but the way they articulated overflow was that the condo had parking, and I think, I think she said there was just one parking spot that was available for that condo, and they were concerned if there's overflow and someone parks there, that now it impedes access to guests that are visiting. And so my question there actually would be almost outside of the context of this project, but it seemed like that was something that maybe we should look into to ensure that that doesn't happen, whether we're, we're able to use permitting or something like that. But for sure, if this goes forward, kind of protecting on Eden Prairie Road that parking for the condo. So the question there would be, what options do we have to do that?
I think a couple of options. You could require, or request that the city post no restaurant parking. Another option would be if the project gets approved and it becomes an issue in the future, it could be referred to the Traffic Safety Committee, and they could take a look at the posting no parking type signs.
Okay, and then the, the last question, Member Jackson asked about protection against smells and loud music. Are you aware of how the smells are going to be mitigated?
I don't know specifically, probably a question that the applicant would, I would assume, have an answer to.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's have the applicant come up and answer that.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. Jesse Hamer with Momentum Design Group, the architect for the project. I'm not a mechanical engineer, so I can't tell you exactly how these things work. We'll be looking at the equipment that, that can mitigate odors, what that rises to, and what, if you put a requirement on the, for approval based on that, presumably, there'd be some language in there where we'd work with Mr. Teague to sort of figure out what, what that requirement would be, because honestly, I can't, I can't tell you exactly like what systems would require. There's probably a range of products that are available at different levels of efficacy, so.
Well, perhaps describe what those products are.
Well, my understanding is that effectively, they are filtration systems that are attached or to the mechanical systems that would otherwise circulate the air from inside the restaurant to the outside. And so they would have filtration requirements and filters, and I've used the word filter a couple of times already. Effectively, that's my understanding. It revolves around various levels of filtration.
Okay. And then anything on sound?
Sound wise, we have no plans for outdoor service that's been discussed in the, in the past. So, you know, we are going to build the fence on the, both the north side and the west side. Obviously, beyond that, we're, you know, we're, we're open to whatever suggestions you guys have, I guess, but I don't, we don't foresee a problem there, but obviously, that's what we're going to say. So, you know, if there's a problem in the future, we clearly want to work with that, with the city, with the neighbors to figure that out.
Okay, thank you. Just stay there for a second. Which, which way would the equipment vent off the building?
Oh, I, I couldn't answer that. Again, a mechanical engineer would have to look at it and tell you. I could tell you, we plan on it to go east, but they could tell me why, there'd be very good reasons why it couldn't, so I, I wouldn't want to say.
All right, good enough. Thank you.
Just to get a point of clarification, Clerk Allison, one of the questions Member Pierce asked caused me to think that, I thought I understood you to say that if you don't have at least 30-seat capacity, you can't apply for any kind of wine or beer or liquor license.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. It is 30-seat minimum and/or ordinance to have either.
If this overflow parking were indeed an issue, would there be anything that would prevent the applicant from putting a gate in the back fence that they intend to put up, so that would facilitate the movement of people parking on Eden Prairie Road to make it easier for them to get into the pizza place?
I believe the intention was to not put a gate in there, based on concerns from residents.
Could that be a condition? No gate, or not?
No gate in the fence. I believe we could, over time, it might become something, I mean, the resolution gets filed on the property, so it should be a condition that, that continues with the property. Someone walking from the neighborhood could just walk to the east around the fence and into the site.
Yeah, it could just walk to the east or walk to the west, around the condo, and go around the condo property and come in that way.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks. Member Risher?
Could we call up the image that shows the buildable area?
One of, we, we have been talking about this project a lot, but there are things that we have not addressed, and a question for Director Teague, putting up no parking signs, it's, it's not working on Valley View in front of View 44. People routinely park in front of the entrance on top of the bike trail, or bike path, and there is a bike path along Vernon, right?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, and it is on the north side, okay. Why would, and in a way, this situation is very much like the View 44 site on Valley View, because you've got this long stretch of road, there's no way to turn around easily or go around a block, you have to continue down for a long period of time, and I have a hard time believing that people, even if there is no parking signage, they will probably park along Vernon, run in, pick up their pizza. What's, there really isn't anything to stop that, correct?
Parking on Vernon?
Right.
It's currently signed no parking.
But that doesn't.
So it's an enforcement mechanism at that point.
Right, I'm just, it's.
People don't follow the rules, and you can call and ask for some enforcement on any of the streets of no parking signs.
But the actual ability for that to have an impact is minimal, because you have to call, you have to get the police there at that time, and they have to catch the person parking where they shouldn't be. I mean, this happens all the time on Valley View. You've got trucks stopping in front, and that was actually part of the design. The architect for View 44 said people will park on the bike path and run in and come back out, and acknowledged clearly during the public hearing that, that stretch of road would function as short-term parking. And I think it's very likely that we put, it's going to be the same thing, we're going to have no parking signs, but it will functionally be short-term parking, and you can have your bike path when it's not being used for short-term parking. The other concern that I have is, maybe somebody could walk me through if, if people don't have a gate to get through to the site, or even if they're coming along, and the sidewalk is going to be closer to the lot line, true? Could somebody tell me how people are supposed to get to the restaurant when they go around the fence? Like, where's the safe pedestrian pathway getting through the parking lot?
Are you thinking, coming from Eden Prairie Road?
Yeah, just maybe use your cursor, you go around the fence, how do you get to?
They would come this way, and then connect up with the new sidewalk here, and into the site.
Okay, so, and the sidewalk would be closer, and they'd go, and this is the same kind of thing when you're walking along France Avenue in front of the US Bank site, and you're heading in a northerly direction, you've got your back toward the traffic that's coming up behind you, so you can't really see well. You have to turn and look to make sure you're not going to get hit. And so the sidewalks, and I would really request that for future plans, especially when we get to this stage, they're accurate, the sidewalk's not going to be that close to Vernon, it's going to be right up near where the cars are parked. And then you're going to have people having to go across in front of the entryway where the cars are coming in. There's also the tandem parking, those three blue lots that are for delivery, so they're going to be coming in and coming out. Those are in front of employee parking, so there's probably going to have to be, and I had to work at a place where we had to park behind each other, and it was this constant car roulette kind of thing that we had to do. But you have a lot going on here, and so that was why I asked whether people were concerned about safety, and I am very concerned about safety. And that leads me to another concern that I raised, and I did do it in an email, and this was about spot zoning, and we're not concerned about spot zoning, is that true?
Correct. The property is currently zoned commercial.
Okay, if we could go to the map that shows zoning? And I totally understand what you're saying, that it is currently zoned commercial, okay? It is currently zoned for automotive use, PCD4, what was it, 50-plus years ago, this was a gas station, and this is what gas stations look like. And I mentioned a dissertation about gas stations and, you know, how, how complex it is, and how routine it is to find these really small, or small triangular shaped spaces. When we talk about rezoning, and we talk about current zoning, one of the things we can talk about is, you know, how it fits today, and I would say that, you know, this is an unusual situation, and the reason why it's guided in the comprehensive plan for residential use is to make it become like the surrounding land use, which is all residential. And so I think it's useful, just, I did contact the League of Minnesota Cities to ask about, you know, and they did not give me a specific answer, but pointed me in the direction of a lot of information, and said, there's a general definition, spot zoning usually involves the rezoning of a small parcel of land, and this is rezoning, that has no supporting rational basis that relates to promoting public welfare. And that's up, you know, everything is up for debate, you know, that's why there's an option to approve or an option to deny, but I think when we look at this site and just all of the movement and the potential risk, two bikers on the bike trail, the very likely possibility people will be parking there, how you're going to get into the site as somebody walking, I think there is a lot of safety risk. The other point is establishes a use classification inconsistent with surrounding uses, and creates an island of non-conforming use within a larger zone district, and I think that is what we're seeing here. And then the final point dramatically reduces the value for uses specified. for uses specified in the zoning ordinance of either the rezon plot or a budding property. And we did hear from people. And I really, I remember the person, I can't remember her name, who will be, who lives right directly across from this site. And I think it's important to recognize there were parallels that were made with other pizza establishments in Edina and Hello Pizza specifically. It was noted that that's near residential. Hello Pizza does not front onto a residential lot. It fronts onto an intersection that's slightly askew, but across from it is commercial property. And then you've got, it's part of a large commercial node. And this is, this is not a commercial node. This is just a .38-acre site surrounded by residential property. So I just want to ask again. We don't think there's any possibility this could be viewed as spot zoning?
I don't, I don't believe so unless the city attorney, I believe he had answered that at the last meeting as well.
So it's currently zoned commercial. This would be a rezoning to another commercial use. So if you feel that, I would say, based on the definition you're establishing, it's currently spot zoned. So I don't think you'd be changing anything, continuing a commercial use. But yeah, the surrounding use is residential, and the comprehensive plan has a guided residential. So that's all understood and acknowledged.
Thank you.
Agnew.
Are we okay to just start general comments now? Or do we want to?
Yeah, I think so. I think so, yeah. Mr. Kendall answered the question I was going to ask him. So we're all good to go, I think, on comment.
Thank you. So my, my general reaction to this is looking at the site. And it is an awkward site. It's a triangle, and it's difficult to find what is going to be the right use for that kind of a site. I know that Member Risher often refers to the Valley View and Wooddale, the condominiums that were put in there. And I live really close to that as well. And it is a really similar site. It is smaller, but it is quite similar. And so I bring that experience into this site in particular. I don't think that housing will work well on this site. And the prime reason for that is, and I think Member Risher actually had a graphic this last time that showed how tight it would be even for four units. I, when we look at that buildable area, I don't understand how something as many as like four units would work well on this site. So then I ask myself what could work or what would be a better proposal. You know, a lot of different ideas were brought forward by community members. You know, at one point, I heard a coffee shop or a donut shop or a barber, I think, was thrown out there, a florist, a shooting range. I don't think that one was serious, but it was mentioned. And the reason that none of these businesses are being brought forward as a proposal for this site is because they're not financially viable. And so that's where, again, we come to this dilemma of what is the right thing for this site. And I think the reality is we don't know that a pizza shop is necessarily the right thing for this site either. But I do think that it is something that could be a viable solution, and it moves us forward in where the site is at today. So then I look at other proposals we've received. The West Side Cafe. And in my opinion, that one was too large for this site. I forget the exact number. It was over 50 seats. And that felt like a lot. It felt too imposing for the neighborhood. But what we have in front of us and based off of calculations, whether it's the 16 seats max in that party spot plus the eight kind of counter seating, 24 seats maximum, to me, feels like it's the right fit for this site. We do see that it can be appropriately parked within the parking lot attached. And so I'm viewing the proposal that's in front of us as a compromise. Because again, I don't think that there is a perfect fit for this site. And so anytime we're making a compromise, I want to look to, and I think a lot of fellow council members thought about this, what are the potential impacts to the neighborhood? And how can we mitigate that? You know, what levers? If parking does spill over onto the neighborhood, what are the levers that we can pull? Whether it's permitted parking, whether it's no parking signs for the restaurant? I think that we have a lot of options at our disposal. Even as we heard, you know, Mr. Teague mention, where we get complaints from neighbors, whether it's because of sound or smell, the city works with developers to help mitigate those impacts on the residents. We could also, you know, potentially work with the county or others to think about, should we reduce the speed on Vernon? I think that there are so many levers that we have out there. And I do truly believe that this could be an amazing benefit to the community. I think that this is where kids in the neighborhood are going to get their first job. I think that this is where people are going to connect with their neighbors and where the book club is going to meet on Wednesday nights. We did have someone from the neighborhood, a resident emailed in and said, you know, and I'm quoting here, "I know some of my neighbors are concerned with increased traffic, but in my view, the benefits of having an amenity like this, small restaurant within walking distance, easily outweighs the negative impact by increased traffic." And, you know, I think I also heard some mention that this would be an eyesore. Well, it's using the same building that's already there, so. And it's revitalizing it. It's making it a positive impact on the community. And I think that that's, that is an improvement. And so my vision, and just in conclusion here, is that, yes, we know that there's a fence that's going to go along that back wall. And I know that the ask from the community right now is that there's no gate. There's no entrance into the community. But my hope is that in a year's time, the community is asking for a gate to be put in because they're going to want to go there. They're going to be the ones that are accessing it the most. And so that's, that's how I believe this will be a positive impact on the community. So thank you.
Thanks, Member Agnew. Well said. Member Risher.
I do want to say that, yes, I do think there's too much housing on this similar site, but that doesn't mean residential property can't be built. I also want to note that we got figures on what the land was, was estimated to be worth when it was sold. And I believe it was in the $400,000 range. It was purchased for $900,000. And one of my big concerns is that land values are being pushed up because we are giving so much, so many variances and going so far that it does impact safety. And I do think we need to really acknowledge the fact that the dollar, the price, what was paid for this lot was, and also that happened with the other site. And in a way, these are very similar. And so you end up in a situation where, oh, we have to allow more development than is logical and safe for the site in order for it to be financially viable. And I think it's our job not to be here figuring out how sites can become financially viable when they're purchased for more than they should be. It should be our job to push back on that, you know, and not be promoting artificial land inflation costs. I don't, I don't think that's the way to go. And I do think there could have been a double-dwelling unit on that site if it had been, you know, looked at and approached in a way that made economic sense. But it really does make me very concerned to think that we might be, and we have been, zoning or allowing planning based purely on decisions to purchase land that may not really have been that wise. So that's something that I want to push back on. And I think it is going to be very challenging for it to work. The other thing is, as was noted, there's no guarantee. We, we rezoned this to PCD 1. We don't have any control of what goes in there. And you could put a second story, stay within the legal buildable area. You could, you know, easily, if it doesn't work out, there could be a very different restaurant with 30 seats. And then you're talking the right to get the liquor license. There is, we don't have control over the site once we rezon it. It can be anything. And they're not just limiting what they're going to do to the building that's there. They want to expand on it. And I think that's important to recognize as well. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pierce, your member Jackson thoughts?
Thanks.
Thanks, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So just a couple of thoughts. I, to Member Risher's point about the market, and I promise I won't get on a soapbox, but I do think that that is a primary, one of our primary issues that we have with housing affordability. And so we do it all over the city, where we take a lot that was, has an X value. We tear it down, and within seven months, that same address, that same plot of land is now, instead of 500,000, it's a million-two. And so I do think we escalate the, the value of land in Edina. But I do believe the market does what the market does. And so we are setting that, not as a precedent, but as long as we continue in that way, we'll see the market adjust in, in the same way. So I definitely get that. I don't think, to put a finer point on that, I don't think council, we should be seeking to artificially control the market. And so the market for this piece of property was set by the person who bought it and the person who sold it. And so that sets what that piece of land is worth from a sale perspective. And I don't think we can control that as a council, nor, nor do I think we should. So for, for this, I actually do believe that this is a, a good use and an appropriate use of the lot. A lot of the comments that Member Agnew made, I agree with. And so I, to double down on a couple of those, when the West Side Cafe was a potential, we all thought that was too large. We thought it wasn't the right fit for a neighborhood to have a rooftop bar and open till later hours in the night. Maybe I'll just put it that way. Much larger restaurant. We didn't feel like that was really a neighborhood family amenity. And so even then, we talked about, well, maybe if it was a quick serve or if it was a coffee shop. We gave a few examples of what we thought might work. And at that point, the, the owner or developer wasn't interested in, in doing something like that. And so we didn't approve that. And then we had the Green Drop come through, and we didn't approve that either. And so I do feel like Station Pizza is a, a, definitely more in alignment with neighborhood family amenity. I think it will be a gathering spot. We live in Highlands. We get pizza every Friday. And now we're, I think I said this before. We now go to, we have been going to Gina Maria's all the way in Eden Prairie because we lived there. And then they opened one in Cahill, so now we go there. We'll be going to Station Pizza because it's, I mean, it's not even a half a mile away from the house. And so I think we will use it. I also believe that it is incumbent on city staff and, and we are a part of that as a council to figure out ways to find the right balance. And so I made that comment earlier. You're hearing that from some of us, that we want to make sure we're striking the right balance. And in this particular case, even for the West Side Cafe, we had a lot of support for that. And so we, we saw very similar numbers. West Side Cafe versus Station Pizza for and against. And so I, I think it is, it is something that I would support. But then I would continue to urge us to think about, what is the right balance to help this become an even better amenity for the community? And of course, we have to do that in a, from a legal perspective. But I, but I would encourage us to continue to try to, to think about ways to strike that, that balance.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, a follow-up question, Mr. Teague. Would they require, would there a variance be required to add a second story to this?
If they built within that triangle, they would not need a variance unless the square footage goes over the parking requirement. So they might need a variance for additional square footage. But any building outside of that triangle in the buildable area would require a variance.
So if we approve this building and they want to put a second story, anything that goes outside that triangle, they'd have to get a variance for?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not automatic?
Correct.
All right. So I told people that I talked to today that I have been 100% on the fence on this. And I, I hear the neighbors and their concerns very deeply and very personally. This is one of the quietest roads in Edina, and I appreciate the change that this would bring to it. I have to say, I'm a little stunned by Member Risher's comments because she's often bemoaning the loss of commercial property in our city for residential purposes. And, and I'm kind of surprised that that's where she's falling on this. Residential makes perfect sense here. And so that's, it's zoned for that. It's logical. It makes sense. On the other hand, there's a strong desire from people in that part of town, where I live as well, for something to do and something to walk to, someplace for kids to go, potentially have their first job, but to hang out, to go on their own power. And so I asked, you know, around, I think there are ways to make residential work for this property. It's not a, it's not a straight path. But it is possible. You know, had, had this been the first proposal that came forward, it would have been yes. And I think the difficult times that we had, you know, with the first round, go-round was just so over the top that it really built a strong opposition to it. But in the same breath, from a lot of people who opposed that first one, said, gosh, couldn't you do something smaller? If this had just been the drive-up pizza place, I would be a yes. I honestly, I just, I, it's 50% on either side. I don't think that we owe a certain return on any piece of property. But by the same token, I think we owe usefulness for a piece of property. So I'm leaning in favor of this. And I know that's very disappointing to, to people in the neighborhood. But it's a very quiet use. I would absolutely, if this goes forward, look for the fan system that would not allow smells and sounds into the neighborhood. I'm very concerned about the Bellicor option. But I think that, that we have to allow use for this property. And if this had been the first proposal that came forward, we would have voted yes. And I'm thinking of Kevin Staunton, who said, well, what's the outcome? You know, that, that, that had you started from scratch and you didn't have any history? We did that with the street reconstruction, and I thought that was a wise way of looking at it. And, and I just, I wish I didn't have to make a decision, honestly. This is just tearing me up. But I think that I would be in favor of this.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Thank you, Member Jackson. None of you know this because you weren't with us upstairs, but we spent about well over an hour on our zoning code and discussing the infirmities in a 54-year-old document. And one of the things that we talked about was the fact that our comprehensive plan provides for medium-density residential, as it does here, is the way it's guided on this particular site. But we really don't have anything in the code that matches up with the comp plan. And this, this is a small piece of my thinking, but this does give us an opportunity, the way this property is guided, to potentially achieve some of that medium-density residential. Why do I, why do I say that if everybody's up here thinking about what an odd piece of property this is and it is? But we know from the public hearing that there were owners of the condominium building and the condominium building next door that were telling us that, well, you know, maybe there's a possibility that we could sell some of that land to be able to create a bigger footprint. So you can think about that in a couple of different ways. You could think about, actually, the condominium expanding to the east. And you could think about the condominium selling some property to a developer that could build to the west, a little bit closer to the condominium. So that's at least one thing, one element of this that's reeling around in my head. But of course, we have a project in front of us that we need to act on. And that's somebody coming forward with an idea of having a commercial use there. And so here, regardless of whether it was the other restaurant idea or that, I don't remember what it was, what was that called? Green, Green Drop? Or this, this, this proposal, I kind of tend to look at them all the same way and other parts of town the same way. I look at, you know, I have a little balancing test that I use. And I, first of all, I ask myself the question, does the proposed use have a potential benefit to the public? I'd say, yeah, it probably does. But then I have to ask myself the question, is there a potential adverse impact on the immediate neighborhood? And if so, does that potential adverse effect outweigh the potential benefit to the broader public? There's only one way I can answer that question. I say yes. The potential adverse impact on the nearby neighborhood, to me, is more significant than the overall benefit to the public. So I worry about several things. I worry about the fact that we'd rezonate to PCD-1, and we got no downstream control over what happens in PCD-1. This is a total outlier piece of property. We've all talked about it in different ways. For 54 years, it was a gas station, then just an automotive repair place. Member Rissler mentioned, it's not a commercial note. It's not Valley View, Wooddale. It's not 70th and Cahill. It's not Sunnyside and France, 44th and France. It's just this outlier piece of property sitting in the middle of a residential neighborhood on a busy street. And yeah, a pizza place is one potential use there, but it got guided as residential for a reason in the comp plan. And I think that guiding it as MDR, as residential use, was the right thing to do, and I continue to think it's the right thing to do, is to continue that exploration of housing on this site. I appreciate all of the time that all of these applicants have put into this site to try to figure out what to do that would be good for their business, good for, good for the town. And of course, the gentleman has proposed it, even lives in our community. But nonetheless, we all have, I think, articulated the way we are analyzing this up here. And I'm led to the conclusion, using my test, my methodology, that I would join Member Rissler in saying that I would not approve a comprehensive plan amendment to this project. And so that, I think because it needs a four-fifths vote, my sense is that we were 3-2. Member Rissler?
It is hard to make decisions. And to Member Jackson's point about how I am so passionate about preserving commercial, yeah, it'd be cool. But I look at safety risks. I look at the ask. I look at the context. I brought up concerns about what we say in our code about through lots. There's a lot that concerns me. And you, I can't just stick to the, I will always support commercial no matter what. And I did, it is hard on that, but I didn't talk about that. But the, there's just too much going on here. And I look at that entryway. I look at the tandem parking. I look at the, you know, it just, I can't see approving this. Thank you.
Yeah, so one other thing I forgot to mention was I hearken back in my mind to the, when we approved the apartment building at Sunnyside and France Avenue of the Lorient. Their first notion was to put a really nice restaurant on the first floor. But of course, and even though they had some public parking in the garage there, and they still do today by virtue of the way the project was approved, folks in that neighborhood were worried about people parking in the neighborhood. And I think it's inevitable that there would be people parking on Eden Prairie Road and going in the back way to this, to this restaurant. And I think it would be adversely affecting the quality of life for people that live over there. So that was another reason that I forgot to express earlier that has influenced my decision on this. So I do believe there would be a negative impact on the neighborhood. So I don't think there's probably any sense in voting on a comp plan amendment.
You need to.
We have to because otherwise it, I think it.
Yeah, we have, yeah, okay, yeah, we do. Yeah, we have to vote on a comp plan amendment. All right, yeah, very good point, fair point. You'd think the old mayor would know that by now. Okay, hold on. Let me pull this up here. So is there a motion? Get on the right one here. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-107, which would approve a comprehensive plan amendment and allow the change in the zoning from PCD-4 to PCD-1?
So moved.
Member Agnew moves?
Yeah, your first vote is on the comprehensive plan.
That's what I said. Didn't I say the comprehensive plan?
No, I thought you said the zoning.
Say that again.
I thought you mentioned the zoning and not the comprehensive.
Yeah, you started with the comprehensive.
Started with the comprehensive. Did I switch over to the zoning?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so there is, so the Resolution 2024-107 is the comprehensive plan amendment? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Well, is there a motion to adopt the comprehensive plan amendment?
So moved.
Member Agnew moves?
Approval.
We have no second.
The motion was for approval.
Yeah, the motion was for approval.
So I'll second.
So Member Jackson seconds the approval of Resolution 2024-107, which would approve the comprehensive plan amendment as proposed.
Yeah, we're voting on the comprehensive plan amendment.
Comprehensive plan amendment only.
And it takes a four fifths.
Requires a four fifths.
Majority to pass.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2024-107, which would involve the comprehensive plan amendment as recommended by staff, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Three, two, motion fails.
So because the comprehensive plan amendment failed, we would recommend that you make a motion to deny the rezoning?
There would be no point in approving the rezoning if you're not going to grant the comprehensive plan amendment. So I'd recommend you deny the rezoning.
All right, even though the failure of the comprehensive plan obviates the need for the, you still want to vote on it? Okay. Is there a motion, so you want it in the form of a denial?
Well, Mayor, you can, you can do it, whatever, whichever way you like.
But approval takes three votes.
Yeah, with three fifths vote, we're going to get in the, if I do it, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be in an odd spot here.
Yeah.
So.
Even those who are in favor of amending the comprehensive plan, I'd still recommend they vote against the rezoning because at this point, the comprehensive plan amendment has failed. So there's no point in pushing for the rezoning.
So the question is whether to move for approval or move for denial?
We would recommend you move for denial.
Move for denial. That's what I was intending to do. Is there a motion to deny Resolution 2024-108, which would approve their preliminary rezoning and site plan with multiple variances?
So moved.
Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the denial of Resolution 2024-108, which would approve their preliminary rezoning and site plan with multiple variances. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries the Resolution 2024-108, seeking preliminary approval of rezoning and site plan approval with multiple variances is denied. Okay. And now we are on to another one of Director Milner's projects. And I think before, folks, we get to the discussion on the final levy for 2025, we might want to take a short break.
That's a good idea.
Do you want to do Director Milner first, or do you want to take a break now?
You already lost one member.
Go for it, go for it.
Well, we already lost one member to a break if you wanted to do it now. Comfortable, Mayor?
Yeah, you can go ahead. You can go ahead and start.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, we're back after the public hearing from last week on the President's A and B Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction. So we took live public testimony on December 9th. We received eight comments. We received eight comments on Better Together Edina as of this morning, and I sent you that report. We offered a variety of options to participate. We got comments against the shared-use paths, sidewalks, roadway narrowing, the maintenance burden for those paths and sidewalks, the owners, tree removals, loss of parking. We had some comments about Alden Park and the traffic and parking there. Heard about vehicle speeds and traffic volumes on Washington Avenue, semi-truck volume on Washington. And then we also heard support for the general infrastructure replacements within the neighborhood. The Living Streets Plan, we just want to touch on that a little bit. Why do we have our standards? We've had standards to reduce street widths for 20-plus years as we've done the street reconstruction. Reduces construction costs, assessment costs, reduces future maintenance costs, reduced lane widths, encourages slower motor vehicle speed, so it's safer. Reduces environmental impacts by reducing impervious surface. And often preserves trees and protects trees and other plantings and infrastructure within that right-of-way. I'll just touch on a few of the comments we heard. So last time, we heard about concerns with snow maintenance. And I want to have the council remember our work session on October 15th, where we talked about snow maintenance operations, staffing, equipment, and budgets. The proposed multimodal facilities, the sidewalks and shared-use paths in this neighborhood do not meet our current practices. We would not recommend adding more maintenance to staff. They already have more than they can handle to meet our two-day level of service. If we keep adding sidewalks, we're going to either do one of two things, right? We're either going to reduce that level of service to three days. And if council's comfortable with that, if directed, we would maintain it as best we could. Otherwise, eventually, we're going to need more staff and equipment to meet that 48-hour request. So we just wanted to throw that, nugget out there for snow maintenance. Parking at the park. Parking is currently prohibited on the north side of Belmore Lane, right adjacent to the park. We're estimating a potential parking demand during events. It's just a general guidance that we found, 30 to 80 potential vehicles depending on the event. It's a lot of soccer events for kids. We talked about Washington Avenue. Why don't we just push Washington over closer to the highway? This is why. We got electrical transformers. We got aerial 169 sound, sign foundations and lights. So that green space is pretty much full along that barrier of 169. We are starting to begin discussions with UNFI and their trucks because we heard about that concern. Right now, the graphic on the left shows the trucks, some travel up that Washington Avenue in Edina. That's more of a residential feeling street. The graphic on the right-hand side shows where they could access that same facility from the west side of 169. It's more of a commercial feel area. So we're having those discussions now with them to hopefully shift most of the trucks to that other route. Washington Avenue parking, there's 18 parcels on Washington Avenue. There's discussions of how many driveways. 11 driveways access Washington Avenue, three access the alley, two have driveway access on Belmore Lane, and one on Maloney, and one on Third Street. If we go with the recommendation of the ETC to put on-street bike lanes, we'd lose 15 parking stalls on Washington. So just to give you that heads up. And then adjacent map, showing all the amenities that we're trying to continue to build connections with sidewalks and shared-use paths. There's Harley-Hopkins Park, our own park in town. We have the Family Center and the Blake School. And Hopkins, right at this location, is like multi-regional trail intersection. We have Nine Mile Creek, Lake Minnetaka Regional Trail, the Cedar Lake Regional Trail, and also the North Cedar Lake Regional Trail. So they all come into Hopkins at that area. And then downtown Hopkins also has amenities that people most likely want to get to. And then there's various transit routes along that Excelsior Boulevard corridor. Multimodal streets with the boulevards that we're recommending, that provide some flexibility for us. So the three-to-five-foot boulevard provides snow storage and design flexibility so we can be respective of mature trees and minimize other right-of-way impacts where we can go down to zero if we have to around various features if we design with the boulevard in mind to start. But then we also always flex that space to save and protect different things. We do want to make two changes to our recommendations. One is on Belmore Lane, right at the park. So if you remember Strackhauer Park on 62nd Street, we had the same concern, and we built a bump out for park users. So we talked to the parks. We're suggesting to widen that street section to create a parking bump out on the north side of the street so users can park on both sides of Belmore right by the park. This would add 13 to 15 parking stalls right there where the highest demand is. That would reduce the need of people parking down the streets in all the other directions. We also heard comments about Third Street. And why not create a buffer along that 10-foot shared-use path that currently exists in Hopkins? So we changed our proposal from 24-foot wide street to 27 so we could provide a three-foot buffer to buffer the users of that multi-use trail that's already there today, that's existing, from the vehicles driving westbound on Third Street. Recall, we wanted to put the parking on the south side adjacent to the homes that are on Third Street there. So those are the two changes. Otherwise, we believe it's feasible, cost-effective, and necessary to improve the public infrastructure. We're recommending approving a sidewalk on Monroe and a shared-use path on Belmore and Washington. Assessments require a four fifths council vote in favor of to approve. So the portions of this project that are assessed need that approval. If we get into a discussion on pedestrian and shared-use paths, which we've done in the past, that only requires a minimum of three out of five council votes if we get into a discussion on some of those metrics. So just wanted to remind the council on a couple of those voting things with what we're dealing with. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Yeah, well done. And I think we all really appreciate the fact that you took to heart so much of the public testimony that occurred a few weeks ago and tried to think about solutions to some of those concerns. And you did a really nice job of addressing some of those. Member Rissler?
Thank you for that. I do have a concern about the protocol we're going to put in place for the eight-foot-wide path along Washington and the idea that residents only have to shovel five feet of that pathway. Just looking at standard protocol for clearing sidewalks, what Minneapolis asks for, and, you know, what you can see online is you really need to shovel the entire space. Otherwise, you get snow compacted down. You get ice. You get tripping hazards. And so that's a concern. I'm not saying it's a blocking concern for tonight, but I think there needs to be a little more reflection on that policy. I'm also, I have a specific question. If we're going to say it's okay to just shovel only five feet of an eight-foot-wide path, does it cease to be a path for bikes and pedestrians? And is it in the winter? And is it, in the winter, it is only for pedestrians?
So I heard a lot of questions. Let's start with sidewalks. Sidewalks, people can walk and bike on at any time of the year, whether they're four feet wide or eight feet wide. That's a city code thing, sidewalks you can bike on.
Okay.
So that's, doesn't matter if there's four to eight to 10 feet wide. We, on all of the state aid routes and active routes of school, we only maintain five feet. Our machines, you saw the picture, it's five foot wide. We make one pass. That's all we have time for to meet the two-day level of service that's required by city code. So we mostly just maintain five feet with the snow, and we plow five feet every time it snows. The only time we would police people not snow plowing sidewalks, we would require five feet. Personally, I think we would hold ourselves accountable. We should hold residents to that same thing. We do it by complaint basis. So if there's somebody that's not maintaining sidewalks, then we'd go review, we've talked to them and see what the issue is, and try to work with that owner to correct that situation.
Okay, thank you. I'm also wondering, with Alden Park, the park, people are going to clear the pathway in the park, true?
Yes, because they already, let's see if I got it, they already cleared that trail that goes on this graphic. They already go through there with a pickup. The Parks Department plows that. So we have differences of Public Works plows all streets and sidewalks on public streets. Anything within parks, that's the park facility guys do that maintenance. So they would be doing this trail and the trail along Belmore Lane adjacent to the park.
Okay, so they would be doing the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you. Just, it went by really quickly, the Washington Street. Can you go back to that slide? And I just want to understand where the driveways are again, please.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay, so...
11 driveways are off Washington Avenue.
Okay.
Three driveways are off the alley, the gravel alley.
Yeah.
Two are off Belmore.
Mm-hmm.
And one off Maloney over here, and one off Third Street way up here.
Oh, I see. You've got two pictures side by side.
There's two pictures. We should have put a line down on them.
Yeah, it went by so quickly. Okay, so, you know, the concern, I remember when the Hennepin County was looking at France Avenue and St. Louis Park and putting a bike lane and removing parking, and they said, the neighbors were like, I can't get deliveries then, that, you know, if I'm going to have dinner delivered, they don't know where to park, everything. So there are three for sure that wouldn't have parking in front of their street, in front of their house if we got rid of the, if we made it a bike lane and got rid of on-street parking. And the ones on the corner, looks like the Maloney and two on Belmore would, is there parking on Maloney and Belmore, correct?
There's no parking on Maloney, but they would all lose any parking on Washington.
Right, but they could pull in the driveway. The delivery truck could, or the delivery car could drop in the driveway and run dinner up to the door.
Yeah.
But if there's no driveway, they can't do that. That was the concern that was raised on France Avenue a million years ago.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I'm good with staff recommendation on that because I think they need that flexibility. And then there was a question about, on Belmore Lane, how it's oriented so that currently the south side of the street doesn't, wouldn't lose any land, but that the north side of the street gets the sidewalk and the buffer. Is there any way to center Belmore as you reconstruct it so that it's equally lose a little bit of land on each side, or does it have to be designed this way?
First, I want to make sure we're using the right terms. Nobody's losing any land, right?
Okay, right.
It's city right-of-way.
Yeah, it's a right-of-way.
So we have rights to 60 feet.
That's right.
The road is centered today. The issue on the south side is there's power poles two feet behind that curb, the whole length of Belmore.
Okay.
Cell's not going to move those for us for the project. So we're designing with that south curb line. So the impacts to the grass area on the north will be more than to the grass area on the south.
Okay, thank you. I needed to hear that.
Yep.
And then finally, just for the public, for a final reassurance, when you're in this process of reconstructing the streets and you come across a mature tree, you do everything you can to preserve it unless it absolutely has to go down. But you watch it, and Luther takes a look at it so that we can try and preserve those mature trees whenever possible. Is that correct?
Correct. So if we get approval tonight, we'll start our design in earnest and figure out which trees potentially are impacted, right? We know there's going to be some removals. We'll work with those owners, but then there's going to be some that are close. Can we use an air spade? Can we work with Luther to identify the species and the health? And maybe it makes sense that the tree is already having some issues, and we could take it out and replace it. Anything we replace or we remove, we replace for the owners, and we work with them on where that goes and what type of trees and stuff, so.
Okay, thank you. So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else from any of your council members? All right. The recommended motion from Director Milner is that we approve Resolution 2024-115, which would get us moving on the President's A and B Neighborhood Roadway and Alley Reconstruction Project that's embodied in improvement numbers BA 466 and A 293. Is there a motion to approve the resolution and the improvements?
So moved.
A second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the approval of Resolution 2024-115, which authorizes moving forward with the reconstruction of President's Neighborhood A and B roadway area and the alley reconstruction in that area as well, embodied improvements numbers BA 466 and A 293. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just briefly.
Yes.
I want to say thank you for reaching out to UNFI and their truck route. And if there's anything we can do to help you in that effort, let us know.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? All right. All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Resolution 2024-115 is adopted.
Thank you.
And now, let's take a little short break before we start in. I'll let you introduce topics here. I think you want to do a little bit of an ARPA spending plan update first and then move into the conversation about the proposed final levy for 2025.
Thank you, Your Honor, Members of Council. The item that is in front of you right now is Item 9.5. The action request it is, we would like you to adopt the updated spending plan to transfer approximately $300,000 in unspent ARPA dollars into the city's general fund as previously recommended by a spending, a previous spending plan, a Phase 1 spending plan. The city council adopted, well, the city received around $4.9 million in American Rescue Plan Act federal dollars in 20, excuse me, in 2021. On July 21st, 2021, the council adopted a Phase 1 spending plan that distributed about $2.6 million of that, of that $4.9. We held on to a bit of that, almost $2 million, and we redistributed that in Phase 2. Phase, the first phase money was distributed mostly to local nonprofits, groups that were trying to mitigate some of the impacts, the negative impacts of COVID. The second was to fund a number of different infrastructure and equipment funding for our city, and that was adopted in December 6th of 2022. In both of these agreements, the understanding was that there was a time by which the recipient had to spend the money. And if they didn't spend the money by a certain date, we had the, we were going to, we were going to aggregate it, aggregate all kind of the unspent money and sweep it into our general fund. And that was, that was a decision of the city council. So this is the process of doing that. We're doing it today because this is the last council meeting of the year. We know we've got a couple of weeks where people could spend their money. They know that this is happening tonight, and we, and they might take the final action to spend the money. If they don't, then we'll, we'll have that money come back to us. That's why when we say transfer about $300,000, we don't know that that number is going to be $300,000, or $100,000, or $30,000. It kind of depends on what happens in the next week. But this is the action that the council asked us to take, and so we're asking for an affirmation of that tonight.
Very good. Questions for Manager Neal? Number Risher.
Can we get an update in January as to what the amount actually ends up being?
Yes, for sure.
And are there any restrictions on the use of this money?
There are. There are some restrictions on it. Our proposal is to use it for uncollected revenues, Don? Is that what that, was that, what's the term that we use for that?
No. Excuse me, lost revenues.
Lost revenues, yeah. There's a formula within the act itself that allows cities to calculate their unspent money, or their, or their lost revenues. We were way under that, so we're comfortable doing that. And so it goes to the benefit of the general fund.
And so might we tonight, as we have the budget discussion, think about moving that money into levy reduction?
Well, we...
Using it for levy reduction?
We had some discussion about that today. That's going to be difficult to do because for the levy, you got to pick, you got to pick a number tonight. And this, we don't know what this is going to be, so it's hard to make some kind of estimate for us.
Okay.
Whether it's 300 or 30, right? If we knew that it was going to be 300, and we were 100% sure of that, and we were going to move it into the general fund, we could, we could do, we could do that kind of move, but it's not going to work out like that.
What number are you fairly certain of?
I don't know that we, what are we, I'm not sure we're fairly certain of a number.
Mayor, Members of the City Council. ARPA? Is that mic?
Yeah.
It's on there. Okay. So just a couple of comments in regards to the funding that remains from ARPA. The expenditure deadline is the end of this year, so December 31st. So from a procedural standpoint, we need to expense that money on existing expenses. So how we would do this technically is, public safety salaries and benefits are eligible use of ARPA funds. So we are going to expense this, whatever remains, we're going to expense this back against police and fire expenditures. So when we talk about having funds left over to possibly assist in the budget, as Scott mentioned, we're really not going to know that until year end. And so technically, what would happen is, well, theoretically, if we expense against police and fire wages and benefits by some dollar amount, let's just say it's 300, there should be a budget surplus of $300,000 because we just added 300 to their budget. So in terms of impacting this year's budget, pretty challenging. But, you know, for the next year's budgets, with the budget surplus, there could be an opportunity. You know, I feel fairly comfortable that there's going to be $150,000 or so left over. Some of the projects... Some of the projects that were included in the government operations spending just didn't come to fruition. And one of those projects was the EMT to paramedic firefighter program. There was $150,000 allocated to that. That is, according to Chief Slama, that program will not be implemented by the end of this year. It is something he would like to do. So there could be an opportunity for that to continue with the budget surplus, but otherwise, I feel fairly comfortable. There'll be $150,000.
Okay. That's helpful. But it needs to be expended by, expended by the end of the year, calendar year?
Correct.
Okay. So you're recommending that we adopt an updated spending plan, you and Mayor Neil, to transfer approximately or about 300,000 to the city's general fund as previously recommended in the phase one spending plan. That's the motion. Is there a motion of that effect?
Still moved.
Jackson moves.
Second.
Number eight, New seconds. The adoption of an updated spending plan to transfer about 300,000 to the city's general fund is previously recommended in the phase one spending plan for the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Any further conversation, any further discussion on the matter? Those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. The motion is adopted. The transfer is approved. And now we are going to move into the conversation around setting the final tax levy for the 2025 calendar year and adopting a budget and potentially approving a 2025, 2030 capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll give the introduction, and then Ari Lenz will take it from there, and we'll answer questions at the end. As we look to final budget approval and final levy approval for 2025, I think it's helpful to think of the timeline that got us here. We did most of the budget work, in fact, almost all the budget work that we're presenting to you tonight was done in 2023. And it was done in 2023 as part of our regular two-year budget cycle. The council saw this and approved, tentatively approved, the budget for 2025 in December 19. We had, we went through the next year where we did primarily, this year, excuse me, we went through this past year where our budget is primarily looking at our capital improvement plans. And so we spent most of our, most of our time and our energy this year working on our capital improvement plans. We did, when we got down to September, when we had to approve our preliminary levy, there's a lot of discussion at the council level about the size, the magnitude of our preliminary levy. Council gave some direction that it was not satisfied with the magnitude of that proposed levy increase. Staff took that direction, went to work, talked with, talked with our team, and we really took a hard look at what were the expenses that were driving, driving that number up. And we're going to talk a little bit more about those tonight. But that took us from September 17 to December 3, where we had our work session, excuse me, we had a work session and a public hearing that night on the proposed CIP and 2025 levy and budget. That brings us to tonight. We had the same kind of direction from the council on the evening of the 3. That takes us to December 17. We're going to, we're going to give you the similar kind of presentation that we've shown you before, but we need to approve a proposed levy and budget for 2025 at tonight's meeting because we are out of time. So what we want to do tonight is kind of review where we were. We want to review some of the feedback that we have for you on the proposed budget. I do want to tell you that we have two, well, we'd like this to be separated into two votes, Mr. Mayor. One on the budget and levy itself, the other on the CIP. They're different enough structurally and from a system standpoint that we want two different votes for those. That's where we are tonight. And following this regular council meeting, we have a very brief HRA meeting where we propose to approve the, the HRA board would approve the HRA budget and levy for 2025 as well. So with that, I'd like to ask our Assistant City Manager Ari Lenz to share the presentation that we have for you tonight, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm going to run you through a couple of slides and then open up for discussion and adoption. I do want to note that if you're tuning in at home or in the audience, I really hope that you go back and watch the December 3 meeting. This presentation is going to be an abbreviated version, and there's a lot of context that Finance Director Tao provided that would be really great from a budget process and services perspective. So if you are tuning in for the first time, please go back to that December 3 presentation and have a chance to take a look at it. As Mayor Neil pointed out, we've gone through quite the process in order to get to this point tonight. He covered most of this, but the most important part is that tonight we need to adopt a budget and certify the levy. The 2025 tentatively adopted budget for December 2023 is shown in the middle column. The preliminary levy budget is shown in the last column. The slight reduction is due to bond issuance being lower than anticipated. Tonight's budget represents a major investment by the community and the council towards public safety, with 5.46% of the increase going towards the new fire station and public safety staffing. Before you counsel, are several options for you to consider. The first option is to adopt the budget as proposed. That is a 13.14% increase. The second option is to reduce the budget by using reserves to pay for the zoning amendment and the design of the cold storage site. This would reduce the levy to 12.13%. The third option is option two, plus council asked us to review our equipment and to see if we had any other opportunities to reduce the amount in 2025. Staff reviewed, and there was one smaller safety-related project that once we started reviewing it, we said we should just do that right now and take care of it, and we found some funds to do that in 2024. The other two priorities are in the plan were public safety-related projects that we were able to actually move into some of the state-provided public safety funds. In total, this is $112,000 that staff was able to identify without impacting service levels or delaying capital. This would reduce the levy to 11.92%. Option four is option three, plus deferring Lewis Park Shelter to a future year. Staff would need to reprioritize the future capital if this option was selected. It would reduce the levy to 10.27%. Option five is option four, plus delaying the hiring of the paramedic firefighters to 1/26, January 2026. Currently, the firefighters are slated to be hired in July of 2025. This reduced the levy to 9.44%. The final option would be to do all of the reductions above, plus a 1% general fund service reduction. Due to the timing constraints, reductions would need to be made by management to implement on time. The goal would be across the board, but some areas may be cut more or less depending on contracts and other obligations. My final slide before opening it up to you guys for discussion shows you all of the discussion items laid out before, the cost, the impact on the levy, and then the impact on the median value home if you were as were to act on those options.
Good. Thank you for that. Yeah, it's nice to see those numbers, too, so you can jump back and forth between those slides. I know we've got it in the prior hard presentation as well, I think that came from early December. Thoughts from council members about the, you know, we've talked about the 13.2% proposed increase. That staff came forward, I think, in fairness to staff, it was something that we talked about when we worked on the two-year budget. But for me personally, and maybe shame on me, I thought we'd get 2024 set, and then we'd have time to work on 2025, even knowing that that was what staff was anticipating, was around a 13% increase. And I found myself mentally thinking, no, it's not going to be acceptable. And maybe I should have said something earlier so we could start to work on this earlier. But I don't think then it was until August when we, when we, when we saw this number again, that 13.14 proposed. And I think all of us had heartburn about that. So for those in our community that have been thinking this, this is too high a number, and it's not sustainable for thinking about doing something like this year over year, we agree. And we've been working on this for a longer period of time than we've been getting notes and emails about it. So we have those same concerns. In fact, I jokingly told my colleagues yesterday that, you know, when you start dreaming about property tax, that's probably not a good thing. But thinking about how to, how to reduce the burden on everybody. And we've all looked, I think, at all kinds of data over the last decade to try to figure out what's the best pathway forward. And it seems like, just to set the stage a little bit more, we've got this, I'll call it more of a short-term problem, the 2025 budget. But then we've got to have this conversation about sustainable budgets over time. This notion of, you know, what, what should be a relationship between property tax increases and property value increases? What about the services that our residents want to make sure that we deliver, these high-quality services? How do we do that in the most effective and efficient way possible on service delivery? How do we continue to maintain what we own together in our community and make sure that we keep up with it? And how do we go about expanding from a capital improvement standpoint? Because there's only so many things that you can do to reduce the budget and then still have a pathway forward where you're doing some of the things that people think are important. And the Lewis Ridge Park building is probably a good example of that. It was in the CIP for 2025. And for me personally, it's something that can wait. And the reason I think it can wait is because we reacted to what our residents were telling us is that they wanted more police and fire protection, and that makes up 5.5% of the proposed levy. So if that's your floor, then to me, you got to start thinking about, well, ways, what are the different ways that we can cut back on some other things? Might service be, cutbacks be a possibility? You suggested that at 1%. Might we defer some of the capital improvement projects or equipment purchases into future years for reasons that we're going to talk about? So I think you should probably keep that slide up on the screen because I think it's easier for everybody to work off of. Because I think people have been thinking about the suggestions that you've made to bring it down from 13.1, potentially all the way to 8.44. And if we could figure out a way to use some of that ARPA money or the surplus that it might help create for 2025, we could probably even get it down a little bit lower than 8.44 if that's the direction that the council wants to go. But I think everybody's been thinking about this. Everybody's concerned about it on the council. Everybody lives here. We all pay taxes, too, and we're sensitive, highly sensitive to no matter what income bracket you're in, or how much your house is worth. At all levels, we know that people are concerned about property tax increases and how do we make sure that they're manageable into the future. And let's not be naive about this. We're in competition with other towns for people that are moving in from the coasts or other places. And they're going to be, no matter how much money they have to spend on a house, they're going to look at property taxes as a significant issue. And so I think that lies in the back of all of our minds as well. So I don't know if anybody would care to lead off on some of their thoughts on these proposed reductions. Maybe some of you feel totally comfortable with the recommended increase at 13.14, but I didn't sense that. But I certainly don't want to presume anything either. Member Rissler?
And we are going to probably view this differently, but I really have a hard time with deferring the Lewis Park structure because it will ultimately just be more costly. I also think about the reality that that building is there for people, you know, who live in housing that we put up that's affordable. And it looks so, it's not just how it appears. They can't use the building when it's too hot, when it's too cold. It was built back in the Nixon era. We, and it's really disheartening to think that that is something that we wouldn't move forward on. And I did send an email last Friday asking, you know, and this is related to the CIP, but we have 500,000 that is being suggested to come from the Centennial Lakes TIF district for the potential pathway across France Avenue. And that hasn't been vetted by the public or anything. And I'm thinking, that got me thinking, how much money is available in unspent TIF? And I know, I believe, what is it, December 31, 2025, we have to, that's the end of the Spark program. But, you know, could some of that money be released now? We'd get a third of whatever. And, and I think, you know, we need to, so I'm kind of getting into a lot, but we need to look at that unspent TIF, not just as an opportunity to invest, but also as money that, you know, many people do feel should go back, well, we had a person come and speak to us, but go back into those three buckets. So I don't know if it's too late to consider that, but if there would be some way, I've been trying to think, how do we find that $900,000 for that park building? So you and I are on the opposite.
Yeah, I'm certainly open-minded. The way, I'm going to have Mayor Neil speak to that issue of the TIF, and I think it has some, it has some limitations on how it can be used.
It does. Unfortunately, we can't do park projects with taxing rent financing dollars.
Not what I'm saying. I'm saying return it to the general, give it back.
Give it back, decertify it.
Yeah, it's been decertified. Stop keeping it and turn it in, and we get it in the general fund.
Not sure that works as cleanly as that sounds, but let me, we'll talk about that.
You can think about that. So, Member Rissler, what I calculate here, just roughly off these, this chart on the screen, is that, that, that building is 1.45% of the proposed reduction. So if we added that back in, we'd be, if you went to the bottom line and went, worked off the 8.44, you'd add back in 1.45, we'd be at 9.89. I don't know if, that was a hurried-up piece of math, but I don't know if that's right or not, or whether you've made that calculation possibly.
I did, and then I also divided, but I left my math at home. But Kate's, I mean, remember, anyway, we'd have over 100,000, if we took the 500,000 from the Centennial Lakes TIF district that's earmarked for the underpass. So that, that money is there. And so if it just went to the city, the county, and the schools, we'd have over 100,000 to cut off of that 900. And that's not everything, but it would at least bring it down a little bit.
Not sure that could be used that way either, but I'm not quite sure. Mayor Neil, any thoughts on that? Or we don't have our Finance Director here tonight.
Yeah, I don't know, Don, if you have any thoughts about that. I'm just thinking about how that process works. Sometimes it works over a couple of years, so it doesn't quite get as instantaneous as we'd like.
Mayor members of the city council. So I've been away for a while, so let me try to recreate my thoughts on this. So whatever money that, from a decertified TIF district that go, we would have to send it back to the county, they would distribute it based on our tax percentage. You know, as Councilmember Rissler said, you know, 500, we'd get 100, plus or minus, back. My understanding is that fund, that money could go into the general fund, which would allow it to be used for other uses.
For Jackson.
So I believe what Member Rissler's talking about for the underpass is that in the CIP, there was a dollar set aside as a placeholder. And Member, or Director Milner, maybe you can help us understand what that money, what that figure represents, and would dropping that off of the CIP then free up that $500,000 for Lewis Park?
So, yeah, Bill Nudorf and I, when the CIP was being developed last April and May, remember, that's when all these projects got put together, was discussion about a potential underpass. So we added projects in there, and one of the funding sources was 500,000 from Centennial Lakes Park. It was just a placeholder. It may or may not even occur. So I think when I hear the term placeholder, that's all it is right now, until we continue those. What we heard from council recently is keep looking at grant funding opportunities and build some better graphics of this idea. So that's what we're doing, because that's what we were told to do.
Member Pierce, are we done? Okay, Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I just have a couple of comments. The, I think we do have to kind of step back from this. The, um, I think we do have to kind of step back from this. When I look at the options, I am, I would advocate, because of where we are in the cycle, I would, option six, I do everything above and I ask for a 1% general fund reduction to get us to 8.4, 8.44. I would, you know, I understand the conversation about Lewis Park. I understand the conversation about the paramedics. But at some point, we gotta look in the mirror and make the tough decision. And so the, the way I would think about that, um, is if there are projects that we still want to get done, then we gotta find a way to fund those. And so I don't know if all the vehicles that Member Rissler just talked about are viable or not, but I think it warrants looking under every rock to figure out if there are additional funds that we could use. But I think the, for me, the 2025 levy, I, I think we should be looking at 8.44. And I would, um, I just think it's a hard conversation to have. Now, I add to that, that's actually not my biggest concern. My big concern is that the 2026 projection is 17%. And so I think we, I've always felt like, and Mayor, you said it, we thought 13 was too high. I kind of always figured we would have a conversation, we end up somewhere between eight and nine percent, somewhere in there. And what we're doing is applying everything that we know of, that we can actually get done in two to three months, is how I view that. Maybe, it might be plus or minus a few months, but it is a short runway to really reduce that number any significant amount. And so then, to make a dent in the 2026, because we can't come back with another double-digit increase. So then it's, all right, we gotta have the tough conversation and do the work starting now to contract our expenses. And it's hard work, we gotta make tough decisions, but we have to do that with the community. And if we're talking about, as an example, making decisions on reducing a service quality, then we gotta talk about that with the city and say, here's what it costs, we're going to recommend, we're trying to hit a certain target to get our cost structure aligned, and here's what that means. We just, we have to do that work. And I think that will take us almost a full year to have those conversations so that when we come into August of 2025, we have a really good idea of how we can adjust our expenses and service levels and what have you to have a projected target that is more reasonable. So that's kind of how, that's how I am, uh, thinking about it.
You know, one thing you mentioned, uh, when you were using the word contraction and talking about public input, uh, one thing we hadn't talked about was something akin to what the school district is going to do. They're going to form a task force of residents with financial expertise. Give them a tutorial in school finance and let them think about ideas on how they can improve the school budget. Now, I'm thinking that, that's a pretty good idea. Maybe we should be thinking about that too in this year that we have to work. Just like we did with the liquor stores when we had total wine move in on our border and the profits dropped to a couple hundred thousand dollars, we formed a task force of residents that had knowledge about liquor store operations and they gave us ideas that pushed us way back up on revenue. I think we should consider that as a council too and thinking about, and then it serves a dual purpose. You have people committed to learning how the city budget works and then you've got allies who can be out in the community talking about, this is how the budget works. So I think that's something else for us to think about. It's a little bit tangential, the decision we have to make tonight, but nonetheless, I'm going to turn now to Councilmember Jackson, she's got some thoughts too, I'm sure.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, looking at this chart, um, it says delay hiring of paramedic firefighters to, to 2026. But I think what we need to think about is looking at service levels. And we're going to have to look at service levels at all the different things. So I don't want it to be that we're going to delay it. We may or may not hire that many firefighters going forward. And so I think we need to kind of think about, you know, contraction's a good word, and what are the service levels where we're going to be, you know, contracting? And I think that the chief indicated that he wanted to have an in-depth conversation about what our fire service levels are, that he's, he's providing staffing for the service level that he has been led to expect, that we expect. And maybe we need to talk about what are our expectations in that particular area and in, and in others. I want to talk a little bit about Lewis Park and the $60 million of deferred maintenance that we have in the city. So Director Benner, I, I think we sent you a slide from, and this is actually from the street reconstruction, but I, I want to put in context, a lot of people have asked, how have we gotten here? And this is out-of-control spending. But I, I want to show this graph because it's really important to set the context. And, and when I was out talking to neighbors over the summer, I talked about how our city was primarily developed in the 60s and 70s. And you can see from this chart, that's when those streets were really built. And, you know, in 1960s and 1970s, the city was developed. And so for a long period of time, we didn't have to worry about reconstructing streets because they were brand new and then we could repair them and recycle them. And so for that stretch, if you look from like 1980 until 2020, it was a valley of spending and now we're peaking up again. And what Director Milner has suggested going forward into the future is evening that out so that we don't have these peaks and valleys of sometimes we have really, really low taxes because we don't have to rebuild streets and other times we have really high taxes or expenses because we have to build streets. But I thought this graphic showed a good indication of the infrastructure in our city. And so when we, and so we can take that down, but, um, when we're talking about where did all this come from, that a lot of what we're talking about is, I believe, just the, the age of the city. And so it's really important to know that when it was all built, primarily, not, not all of it, but a big bunch of our city was built in the 1970s and it's aged out. It's 50 years old, there isn't a whole lot of life left, certainly in the streets, but I think in other, um, assets that the city has. But that $60 million of deferred maintenance is a really mind-bogglingly big number. And that includes the Lewis Park shelter. And just to talk a little bit about the Lewis Park shelter, it's unique in that it doesn't have any windows. So it's hot in the summer and maybe it's fine in the winter, but for the young people who are working there, I worry about their safety. When they're in there by themselves, how, how can someone walk by, help them stay safe if they can't see in? And I, so I think beyond it being an old building, it's also an unsafe building. And, and that worries me. And it's, it's a big amount, it's $900,000. It's only going to get bigger. Could you, Assistant Manager Lynn, could you go to the next slide that you had where it showed, yeah, this is helpful to see what the impact is? So if we drop, that's 1.65%. So that's a big number, but the way we got to $60 million of deferred maintenance is decisions like this. And, and that really worries me. I'd like to think that we can take care of the things that we have. I also am really worried about the tax increase. It's a lot. So, you know, if we can get it down to 8.44%, we've, we've made a short-term victory at a long-term expense because it's not going to be $900,000 when it comes back five or six years from now. It's going to be $1.2 million or more. It's, it's going to get, nothing but get more expensive. And we have to recognize that this is a aging city and aging city needs renewal of its assets. And so I'm really, I, I'm with you, Member Rissler, on, on wanting to pay for Lewis Park. It's painful. This is a, this is just a jaw-dropping increase in taxes and I hear people's concerns. We've had, you know, increases in a number of things and I think we're going to, the conversations I had, um, this fall, when we began talking about the preliminary levy, I had some really thoughtful conversations. And the one thing I asked was, well, this budget contains $1.9 million for asset preservation or in this case, uh, replacement, should we cut that? That's $1.9 million, boom, off the top. And that would cut the rate, and they said, no, don't do that. You have to go back and you have to look at the systems and you have to look at the services we're providing and are we overstaffed and do a deep dive? And we can't do that between August and now, but next year we have to do it. And, and Member Pierce, I think you put that really well. And I really, I strongly agree that we're going to have some difficult choices, but we need to look at the service levels, what we're providing and is this what the, the community needs? And we'll have to have some, some difficult choices, but I'm reluctant to make a cut to our capital, um, asset preservation. And that's that money that goes into parks and goes into, um, other assets around the city. So if we add that back in again, where does that put us if we do everything except Lewis Park? Or at 10%? Yeah, it's still a big number.
I had a 9.89, but I don't know.
9.89, yeah. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, understandably, yes. Member Pearson, Member Agnew.
And so I just wanted to piggyback on that and actually just use it as an example. I actually don't disagree with anything you said. But then what I would say is if we want to prioritize that, then we need more than a 1% reduction in the general fund. And so that's, so I, I just think we have to have a practice of, if we want to do that, then we gotta figure out how to pay for it. And again, like I said before, I, my bigger concern or biggest concern is actually what do we do moving forward, not just this particular year? So I, I think that's a great, um, example.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do particularly appreciate this view because I, I think it's helpful to think about what are those important line items that we're talking about right now? It's, it is actually easy to look at the one above and see, or I don't know if it's one or two above, but where we see the, um, 8.44% increase, right? If we do six, all above, plus the 1% general fund reduction, right? It is kind of easy to just go to the bottom and say, that, that looks like a much better number, let's go with that. And so that is where, and I think, um, Councilmember Pierce did a nice job in kind of articulating, like, we need to be sticking to numbers and, and really rationalizing this down. And so I think for me, the part that I am like most stuck on is the park. Um, and I, I think that's because, and I, I think, um, Member Jackson, I appreciate you bringing up that visual again, because the reason, right, that, that towns and communities face this kind of influx and this increase in, um, property taxes is when they're going through that need to revitalize or reinvest into infrastructure and assets that exist. So many of our, you know, assets were created 70, now I'm doing math and it's later, but like 70 years ago, right? And so in a lot of ways, yes, we've started to refresh that, but we, we continue to get hit kind of on a cyclical basis with where do we need to do some refreshing? And so it's, it's hard to pull those out and it's hard to also leave it in because it's 1.65%. And so I think, yeah, that's just, I'm really stuck on that one and I don't know how to feel about it.
So that brings you to what kind of a conclusion? Leave the park building in? Is that it?
It's more like I'm on the fence.
Oh, okay. Okay. You know, I, I've mentioned this before too, but I think about these, uh, the capital improvement plan items, to me, they are by nature deferable unless they're beyond repair. And, um, that's why I'm thinking, you know, Lewis Ridge, Lewis Park building hasn't looked good for many, many years, but it's, it's not in a state of disrepair where it needs to be torn down. And to me, it, I thought Member Pierce said it well, you know, we've got to, if you're, if you're going to shoot for something between eight and 9%, which is kind of where most cities in the state are, when we got that data, and I think it's in this presentation, uh, and that's at least a, a marker, uh, an indicator of challenges a lot of people are facing, then you've got to have some discipline around, around what you're doing. And if you've got a capital improvement project that can be by its nature deferred unless it's beyond repair, then Lewis Ridge, the Lewis Park building falls to me into that, that category. And, um, I suppose another way to get there is to think about 2% reduction in services, as you mentioned, to get into that range. So, you know, and we talk about this thing, it is challenging, but as I worked on this, there, there is good news in, over the past decade, you know, that, uh, that, that, I see that debt, I noticed that debt as a percentage of total property value has risen only three tenths of 1% over 10 years. And in that same period of time, of course, our property has more than doubled in value, I think, or approximately doubled in value from about $9 billion to $18 billion, which is great. And then when you look at our legal debt margin at 412,932,000, which is the amount we could theoretically borrow under the state statute, it's a debt to, to a margin ratio of 10.96%. And that data really, to me, shows the benefit of growth that we've had in our community. Manager Neil.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. One, when we think, when we've talked about this, this budget before, I've talked about it as an investment budget because there are two major factors that are really distinguishing our tax levy from that of most of our peers. And most of our peers are in that 6% to 8% range going into 2025. The difference between us and them really is that we're proposing to hire 10 public safety employees and we're building a $40 million fire station. Those two things really account for five and a half percent. If you take five and a half percent out of the 13.14, we're at 7.68, very comparable to, you know, the Eden Prairies and Minnetonka's and, and those cities. The other thing I would note for that is that we do include in our, in our presentation, our PowerPoint presentation, and Mayor, we were talking about this yesterday, earlier today, that a, a Realtor had talked to you about being careful because people might move to Minnetonka. Our property taxes are 18% less than Minnetonka. For a, um, for a million-dollar home, our taxes, our proposed taxes, even with this increase, are $725 less for that home. So we do compare, even with our proposed increase, we do compare pretty favorably to our, to our neighbors competitively.
That's all good to know too. I've had it a couple of different ways. I've had it expressed by residents that they've thought about moving to a different suburb, and I want to give them that data on Minnetonka. But, um, uh, when I talked to the head of this real estate company last week when I had lunch with them, he, he said, it's, it's clear that people that are coming here are making decisions, even though they're buying expensive properties based on what they see for property tax. So that's something to be mindful of as well as we go about setting this budget. As I mentioned earlier, I, I view this differently than you do because I, I, I think that, and I feel that we responded to the requests of our constituents and it was a little bit out of the sequence of what we would of the sequence of what we would normally have anticipated in terms of budget. So that we adopted this notion of building that new fire station, adding these police and fire personnel, because there was a demand for increased public safety. Well, that told me that was something somewhat unanticipated, and so then, to me, you got to think about making adjustments somewhere else, so that it stays within the realm of achievability for most folks in our town, even though that is something that they asked for. So that's the way I kind of look at that. Member Jackson, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just had one more thing that I wanted to add. When we talk about, when we talk about the park project, the Lewis Park project, I think it's important for us to make sure we understand that we don't, we don't save money by deferring it, because we only are going to save money by deferring it by decreasing our levy, our CIP levy. And if we decrease our CIP levy, that means, that's how we save money. But if we're going to add it to a future year, it's got to, it's got to go through a process and compete with other projects that are already scheduled for '26, '27, '28. So that's the important part to remember. If we, if we want to defer it, we can defer it, we won't spend that money this year. But if we're going to defer it, it doesn't really save us money in the immediate term. It does save us money in the immediate term, but not in the long term.
We still need to do the work. That's what you're saying.
Well, we still need, but we only save money if we decrease the levy, right? And we would decrease the levy by 900,000 or whatever that number, whatever that number is, that's what, that's where we pass savings along to our taxpayers. But if you want to ever do that project again in the future, you're still going to have to increase the levy by 900,000.
Member Jackson, go, but I want to, I want to respond to that a little bit.
Well, I hate to do this from the dais and everything, but I see Director Vedder's here. Is there a compromise for that building? Does it have to be replaced? Could you tell us a little bit about how that, how we got to that $900,000 figure? And is there an alternative that would be less expensive, but we could still upgrade the, you know, update the building?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Jackson. That building is our oldest warming house shelter. It's not a cooled facility, but it is a heated facility, so when we have skating this winter, we will have heat there. You correctly identified that it did not have windows. That building was originally built as an open-air pavilion with slide-in walls that were taken out seasonally. At a certain point in time, that building was determined that it would just leave those walls up permanently. It was kind of an internal project to insulate them and kind of finish carpentry that out. The dollar amount is what we would consider a kind of a scalable project for that site. I know there are other associations that primarily use that park, that would be interested in partnering with us down the road about having additional storage space, et cetera, from the athletic side of things, because they're a primary user of Lewis Park. As far as the top of my head of interim fixes or things we can do to the interim, I think I'd have to go back to the team and discuss that a little bit further about what that might be. There are prefab structures that you can buy that park service areas, national parks, state parks kind of use from time to time. You have less control over design and aesthetics, but they are prefabs, so they come at a modular cost level. We'd have to kind of research that as well.
So one of the other points about cutting that out is that then we're going to go from zero in the parks to $1 million next year, which will be an increase, a tax increase again. So, you know, as we go through this process, if we're ever going to continue repairing things in the parks, and I don't know how many times the Parks Commission has looked at funding for the underfunded in the parks unsuccessfully, we have to realize that if we take that out of the budget now, it's going to come back in, and it's going to come back up. Not just the increased cost of the building, but also there will be a tax increase to fill that hole back in again. But I hope that we can have a thorough discussion. But would my council members be interested in, you know, asking Director Vedder to look at a cheaper building and cutting the cost from $900,000 down? Oh, I'm done. Thank you.
To me, if we do this, I'd like to do it right, you know, whenever we do it. But nobody here has said that is concerned about this, that it's going away as an obligation. We've all been using the word defer. And so we recognize that nothing gets cheaper over time. But we're at a particular point in time where it's pretty interesting, because, you know, we go through this property tax exercise, and the first thing we wait for is a determination from the state on class rates. And they allocate obligation between commercial property and residential property. Well, they've shifted it significantly towards residential, because that's where all the property value increase has been. And commercial property has been going down in value. And, you know, think about Minneapolis. I mean, that's, they got a real problem there, because their commercial property has been shrinking in value. So when, earlier in the process here, when we asked Manager Neil, well, does 13.1% mean 13.1%? He was candid, and he said, yeah, this year it does. You know, because we've been involved in these budget conversations before, where the burden has been more in commercial in years gone by. And we might raise taxes 8%, and we look at our tax statements, and the tax only went at 5%. And now we see situations where we say, well, we're thinking about 13%. We have a primary levy, and some of the people in our town are calling me and saying, hey, Mayor, my city tax went at 19%. And so that's all because of that clash rate shift. So if that changes in the future at some point in time, and things get back more in balance, and/or more weight shifts from a class standpoint, classification standpoint, back to commercial, you know, and the economy is doing well, but maybe it'll be doing better, you know, that's one of the reasons I'm thinking about deference, is to take some of the pressure off people this year, and then to get us in a situation where, and folks don't know about this, but we're going to spend our whole spring retreat around budget issues, developing a structure that we think is appropriate to make sure that we can do what we need to do in our town, and continue to do it in a responsible way, like I think we have in the past. So to Member Pierce's point, it's the long term that we need to worry about. We can, we can solve the short-term problem, we're going to do that tonight as we have this conversation. We're on about a 1.5% swing right now, as well, I can, best I can see. And then the heavy work comes in the spring when we go to work on the long-term budget strategy, and a look at the whole structural makeup of the town. Other thoughts? Member Agnew, did any of this conversation help you move off one way or the other? You might be the swing vote here.
That's how I'm starting to feel. I think that I usually tend to want to invest in these things as it's been prioritized. There have been, like, the capital improvement plan has been a practice for a while, and this was identified, Lewis Park in particular, was identified as the next best strategic priority for us as a city to invest in. And we, we have a very long list of other projects that we want to get to. And I, so I think for me, I'm leaning towards including it in this year, because I, there's always going to be other projects that we need to invest back into in our community. And so I don't want to create a snowball effect of now, next year, we have two or more.
If there's, Ms. Lenz, did you have something you wanted to add?
Once you guys kind of come to a version of a consensus, we are going to ask for a little bit of time to rerun some numbers, because that wasn't one of our scenarios in that order, if you're removing the firefighters and keeping Lewis Park. So we get to run a little bit of numbers, but we can do that for you. So I was just going to let you know.
Well, another thing we could do would be to say, as Member Pierce says, let's get to 8.5. I'm just using it to sort of round it up. But let you figure out how to do it without taking out Lewis Ridge, Lewis Park. Maybe that's not a good idea.
We can do that. We'd need some deference, I think, from the council.
We've got, we've got some, typically, we have a surplus, and that money's been used to put it in the construction fund. And we don't know what that's going to be.
Right. And we won't.
But I also know we have to set the levy tonight, because we've got to get, you know, the county's got to get their property tax statements out in January. Member Rissar?
And I'm, I also want to, when we say delay hiring paramedics, all of them? How many weren't we talking?
Six.
Six. Couldn't it be less than six?
Sure.
We want to keep them in batches of three.
Yeah.
Okay, because I have issues with that. I mean, honestly, I feel like 1, 2, 3, and modifying 5, and then to Member Pierce's point about the general fund, maybe that needs to go up a little bit. But to my idea about using unspent TIF and returning that money, that could offset reductions to the general fund. But that would be on staff to figure out if that's viable, and it would be an incentive to do that.
I like the idea of delaying the hiring of the paramedics as recommended firefighters. I mean, we already know that from our quality of life survey, and the company that does it for 300 to 400 cities around the country, that we're number one in medical response times with what we have. We don't need more firefighters to, you know,
But we
Stay at the top on that, I don't think.
We also
We're not going to have the fire station, new fire station ready for probably a year, year and a half.
Right, it's just, I also heard Chief Slama say that it's the number of people doing overtime, you know, that's putting pressure on other firefighters. And I feel like to Member Jackson's point about having a more, now I can't remember what you said, I want to say nuanced conversation with the chief, like, right.
About service levels.
And to be saying, oh, I just feel like I don't have enough information to say, okay, fine, we won't hire all six. I just feel like I can't responsibly do that. I could say three, but I don't really know if I, I feel like I don't have enough information on that.
The existing level of support for the fire department for overtime built into the proposed budget? I would assume it is.
For the staffing level and service level that they have now, yes.
I think the point was more that it was forced overtime, where people were told they could not leave. And it was more of the impact on morale and potentially retention within those roles. That's how I understood that.
That's right.
So I, I'm going to repeat this. I really want you to understand that I feel like I am so neutral. I have no issue with us doing Lewis Park. We could add all the firefighters. And I can, I understand why we need them. I have no question at all on that. My question is, how do we demonstrate the discipline to pay for that? And so I have learned in this role that my construct of managing my budget at work is nowhere near as complicated, right? But in terms of, we have expenses that we can't cover, so then what do you do? There's only two things you do. You spend less, or you generate more revenue. And what this is doing is saying, there's all the stuff that we want to do, we just generate more revenue, and we're generating more revenue through the property tax levy, right? That's like, that's what we're doing. And so I am saying, whatever we want to put in there, we have to demonstrate the discipline to pay for it. And Scott, I don't know how to do that. And so what, what just kind of puts an even finer point on it, the 1%, the 1% general fund reduction, that's $545,000.
Something like that.
We're having a discussion around Lewis Park. There might be something in the 545 that we care more about, because you may come back and say, all right, you know, to hit that number, here's what we're going to do. And we may not like that either. But we can't see that today. So we're reacting to what you're presenting to us. And I would feel 100% more comfortable if we said, we want to do Lewis Park. And then we said, all right, then to pay for that, we have to increase the general fund service cut and give you the discretion to do that. And so you come back and you say, all right, we got Lewis Park done, and here is how we've done it. But we can't, in my opinion, we can't do, it's hard to do both of those things, for us to add things in, not really know how to pay for it, and then have these conversations with residents and say, well, yeah, that's what it is, that's what it costs. And the other comment I wanted to make, too, and I forgot about this, it does, I think it's worth just saying to people, they're probably not awake, but for the folks that are still here, we've gotten emails from residents that, and some of them are great, right? Some of them aren't so great, right? To make an assertion that the city staff somehow is trying to confuse people, or, like, we're not doing that, right? And so I just want to go on record saying that that's not the case. People are not purposely trying to hide information and purposely trying to be confusing. It's confusing. And so we are going to, regardless of what we agree to tonight, because we got to agree to something if we want to go home, we will still do a ton of work between now and then to solve the challenges that we have for 2026. I'm done. Sorry.
I'm assuming that all these ideas you gave us on possible reductions are deemed by staff to be feasible. Maybe not desirable, but feasible.
I would say
Maybe not something you're recommending, but they're
Yeah. I would say feasible and not harmful, 1, 2, and 3. I think we begin to get into some more difficult policy choices when you look at 4, 5, and 6.
Okay. What if we did 1, 2, and 3, and then, and this is going in a different direction than Member Pierce, but said a 0.5% general fund service cut? So that it wouldn't be quite so severe? Because I do feel as if we're kind of shooting in the dark, and we have no idea what the implications of
What did you say beyond 1, 2, and 3, Member Rissar?
And then instead of a 1% general fund service cut, we make it 0.5% just to get the, I mean, because then it wouldn't be quite so impactful. But, because the thing is, I feel to Member Pierce's point, we don't really Because the thing is, I feel to member Pierce's point, we don't really know the implications of what we're doing and that, I mean, maybe that wasn't your point.
Totally not my point.
That's my point. Okay, that's not your point. I'll say that's my point. But it's late, and I think I heard you wrong. Apologies there. But I feel like at some point, we're not sure. And I do think, you know, hearing that there's forced overtime for firefighters, that has me concerned. And so, you know, we need to really think about the implications of what we're doing because they could be kind of costly. The other thing is, we're supposed to be voting on giving an additional $80,000 to the historical, Edina Historical Society. What if instead of doing that, we just did an additional $20,000? And then that would free up $60,000? Or six, excuse, yeah, $60,000, which is not that much.
I was just going to ask, Ari, the mayor asked me a second ago, is the $80,000 for the historical society in this number?
No.
It's not? Okay.
What was the question?
Of whether or not there's a proposal that you're going to consider next to contribute $80,000 to the historical society so they can remain a functioning body. That number is not included in the budget that we have tonight because it just, it wasn't part of the cycle.
What did we conclude about member Risher's idea of decertifying the Spark funds? Is that feasible or is it just so complicated that it wouldn't really have an impact until 2026?
I'm sorry, I just don't know, right? The Spark funds were created by special legislation. So they probably work the same way, but we don't, but we just haven't had any legal research on that.
I don't think they do work the same way because they have a limited purpose.
Yeah.
But anyway, we don't, we'd have to get the answer to that.
But that invites a, I mean, that's a policy discussion you ought to have too because the Spark Fund was created by, recommended by staff, approved by the HRA. If you want to do away with that, that's an issue you should have some discussion and debate over.
So my recommendation, maybe I'll even, I don't know, look if we're in motion territory, but I would say, oh, gosh, what slide should I talk about this on? If we go up one slide, I would say do the number six, all of the above, but keep Lewis Park in there. But then instead of a 1% general fund reduction, figure out what that has to be, 1.5-ish, to cap the increase at 9%.
You'd have to go run some numbers on that. Without making a motion, do we have a...
Do you have a consensus?
Have enough agreement that she could run numbers on that?
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry. So again, that is a fine suggestion. But again, what we're doing is we are actually, we're partially saying, we value this Lewis Park more than whatever else we're going to cut. And I, like, it, that, I just don't understand that. And so I would, I would just, I wouldn't include Lewis Park, and I would stick with the 1%. And so I would target the 8.4%. And everything we're saying is accurate. When Lewis Park comes back into the CIP, it's going to have to compete with other projects. It's going to cost more. All of that stuff is true. But if it's a million dollars, I'm going to say the same thing next year, right? And so I just, like, it's tough for me to say, to choose 1.5% general fund reduction and have no sense of what that extra 0.5, where that's coming from. And so that, that's why I, from that perspective, my preference is to do the hard work throughout the year because now we're collaboratively, we're doing it. You're coming back and you're saying, here's how we think we can get there. And then we're having that conversation. But today, it's just all blind. And I don't, and I, I struggle with how we make the decision to continue to not defer, I struggle with how we make the decision to not defer Lewis Park. How do we value that, but we're okay with a 1.5 general reduction? And how do we value those two things? So I just fundamentally, I struggle with that. And so I take, right or wrong, here's how I value it. You put it on a list as something that we could do. So you felt strongly that we could do that, for whatever reason. I put a lot of value in that. And so everything on that list, I place value in you believing it's the right thing for us to do to hit that target, given the direction we said 13 was too high, right? I put an enormous amount of value in the fact that you recommended it. And I treat them all as equal right now. When we do the work to take the 17% to something more reasonable, then we're doing all that together. Now I got more data. Now I'm going to be asking, so how do you think that, you know, option A, B, or C to get the 17 down to something different, what's in there? All right, now we got to go tell the residents, here's what we think is the difference in service level for that. And then it's a collaborative conversation. And I really like the idea of having members of the community involved in that somehow. But that just feels different to me because then we're going to choose things that we all have a reasonable sense of value around. But today, I treat all of these as equal, simply because I trust you did the work and you recommend this is the, as a way forward for 2025.
So I view the Lewis Park differently. I don't see it as a park shelter. I see it as part of the $60 million of deferred maintenance that our city has, which is debt that nobody's asking to be paid back. There's no, we don't have a bank that's saying you've got a $60 million loan, you're not paying it back. But we have a $60 million loan against the future of our city that is not getting paid back. And that's how I view it, not as a specific project that's, is this versus that? To me, it's that debt that's out there that we need to take care of the assets, and it's a debt that we've already incurred and we should be paying back. And this is the face of it this time. And so I think if we have an obligation to care for what we have, we have an obligation to care for what we have, and that's a debt that's existing. We've already incurred that, and we need to pay it back. That's how I view it. I don't view it as a particular line item, but as the idea of that debt is out there. And of course, we can defer it. And you make a very good point about we haven't had a conversation, but I think the payment towards maintaining our parks is a debt that's out there, and that's why this is important. And I'll be honest, the recommendation goes down to six, and it's in order of impact and favorable to least favorable. And, you know, if we, four is in the middle, right? So the thing to do, I think you're right, is to not question all of that. But I do want to, I want to go on record as saying, this is debt that's out there. This is care that we have not done. And it's not, things age and things break down, and they get old and they fall apart. It's the way of all assets. And if we're not taking care of them, it just continues to go down. And so that's a debt that we have that's caused by time. It's not caused by a policy choice, but we decided we wanted parks, and now we have to care for them. So it's, you know, I'll vote for six. I don't like it. It goes against my values. I really think we need to address asset preservation, but that looks like where we're going.
Remember what our average surplus is at the end of the year?
It really jumps all over the place. It's been $2 million, down to $200,000, down to $80,000 actually in...
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion? So I ran some quick numbers based off of what's here. And if we do all of the deferrals except for we put $450,000 away for Lewis Park, that brings us to 9.26%, which would still be taking care of some aspect of the capital, setting it aside, but it would get us to a much lower number than where we're at today. So that's just going to be a recommendation that I'd make.
Say that one more time.
So I would recommend that we set aside $450,000. So next year, the amount, we might not get the project done this year, but we're setting aside $450,000 for that deferred maintenance for next year. And then we're able to work on Lewis Park and get started and figure out what the exact costing might be. Maybe the number will be lower, maybe the number will be higher. We'll figure out exactly what that looks like. But it's setting aside some money so that you're not necessarily deferring maintenance costs, and it ends up putting it as a 9.26%.
So can I ask a question? So that's, how much was that? $450?
$450.
Yep.
And so the question I have, because I would still go with the 8.4, but I'm asking, I'm going to ask this question. So the $450 that we're going to earmark for Lewis Park, is there any other deferred maintenance that we would rather spend $450 on?
Great question, and I think you guys could consider that. We could come back to you with other options. There's $60 million worth of all sorts of stuff. So if Lewis Park isn't at the top of the priority list, absolutely reasonable. We could set aside $450,000 for construction of whatever that looks like.
And so the reason I asked the question that way is because I think you put Lewis Park on here, and I don't think it was the highest value. Because if it were, you wouldn't have it on here, right? And so I'm just drilling into the, I put an enormous amount of value in the fact that this was the list that you put together with the limited, we can call it limited, assessment that you had. And so the flip side of that is if you say, you know what, we can earmark $450, right? I'm going to have value in that. I'll have value in that as well. But I think I would still go, and I would recommend that we do six. But I think what you're proposing is a good way forward. It just doesn't, I don't know that the $450 should be spent on Lewis Park because you had it on here to say, we don't need to do it at all. We defer the whole thing.
We had it on there because it did have the potential to be deferred.
Yeah.
And not all projects do.
Right, that's my whole point.
And you indicated earlier that nothing on this list was hurtful.
I said from options one, two, three or not, but four, five, six, I'd say there's a level of...
There's some pain.
Yeah.
A little pain, okay.
We move forward with option six?
See what we get.
And just...
Just three.
He wants to move number six, right? 8.44% increase?
I'll second.
Or decrease, I mean, or increase, lowered from 13.14 to 8.44.
And member Jackson was asking if it was a simple majority or...
Yeah, it's simple majority.
It's a simple, yeah.
That 8.4, that 8.4... Four is, would be measured off of the 24 levy. So that's the, that's all you'll see when it comes back to you.
Okay.
Member Pierce is moving that the 2025 general fund levy be set at 8.44% utilizing the methodology shown on whatever that slide is, that has the proposed forms of reduction from the proposal that we had from staff at 13.14%. You're second?
I second.
Discussion? More discussion? Member Risher?
I'm having a really hard time having no additional firefighters and deferring this cost, so I'll just say that.
I'd like to talk about Lewis Park a little bit more when we get done with this vote, depending on how it goes. So the motion is that we approve Resolution 2024-110, setting the 2025 tax levy at 8.44%. How that affects the 2025 operating budget.
You going to say?
Actually, a number.
Oh, so she's printed out.
That's okay. So it's, we set the tax levy amount at $47,313,250.
That should be the motion.
Which, which has the effect of...
Yeah, so if you do that, and then there's the construction fund, number two, so you could, your total tax capacity levy is here. So this is actually the number we'd want to set.
The total. We're going to set the total, and then we'll redistribute them.
Yeah, we actually, we ran that scenario, so you guys made it easier on us than I thought you were going to.
So the motion is to adopt Resolution 2024-110. So you created this in advance. Thank you. It's a budget resolution adopting the budget for the City of Edina for calendar year 2025 at total tax capacity levy of $58,750,854 with a established levy for the general fund at 8.44%. Member Pierce moves that?
Yes.
Member Agnew, seconds?
Yes.
Discussion?
Do you want to, can you repeat your...
Further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the, as a motion is stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post?
Nay.
Period. 2025 levy is adopted. Budget.
Next up, we'll need a motion to adopt the 25-2030 Capital Improvement Plan, removing Lewis Park.
Yeah, I've got some concerns about that. We haven't even had time to have a conversation about that, and I don't know why it needs to be adopted tonight. Can you give us your thoughts on why it's important to do that tonight? Because there may be things in here that may be part of the broader conversation we have in the spring.
Yep.
And now we've got something we've adopted, and...
Yeah.
Yeah. My, my reason for recommending removing it, and we can reprioritize and bring you an amended version back, is there are a lot of projects in there, in all other areas of funds, that we, people want to start working on those projects in order to be able to get them back to you. And the next time we're going to be able to meet is going to be two months away. So if we adopt it now, we can, as staff, take a look at it and tell which projects we think would be reasonable if you wanted to reevaluate to hold on. But at least adopting it allows all of the other funds to begin working on the work that is included in the.
Because there's a fair amount of the, of the CAP that's funded with non-tax dollars, right? And so those projects really aren't as impacted like Lewis Park and other kind of conventional park projects are.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Well, how, how do we know what you're going to start working on and what you're not going to start working on? Because I see in here, for example, $300,000 for studio lighting in the chambers.
That's probably most likely funded out of PEG funding, would be my guess on that one. So that's a different funding source that is pretty limited.
You'll know when we want to start working on these mostly because we have to come back to the council and get authorization for contract or, or share timelines with you.
Fair point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Remember Jackson?
One thing I would like to take off the CIP is the long-term planning for the Braemar Course Event Center. I don't like the ARC of the debt service.
What year is that under?
That's under 2020, 2029 and 2030. It's added in, so it'd be in the 2029 plan. And that was something that I had asked to be put in. And I think, you know, given the amount of new things that are coming on board in these different debt discussion, again, we're going to have a lot of things coming old at the same time. And I, I think that's something I would like to defer.
Can I?
It needs to be done, but.
Make a recommendation there real quick. We are not going to actually start on any projects in 2029 or 2030 before you guys have an opportunity to start working on those projects. So I 100% expect that the projects that are in there from a debt service perspective and even from a construction fund perspective, they're all so hypothetical in those out years that I wouldn't get too caught up on 29, 2030. I would focus more on 25, which is really what we're going to be adopting, is really 25s and we're going to have an opportunity to talk about it for 26. I will also note, maybe we could amend it to say, we're removing Lewis Park from the 2025 list. We could still put it in 26, 2030, or any time in, in between there if you want to look at that way.
I think they're in there just as placeholders. So beyond 2025, that's part of the budget, but beyond that, it's just kind of a wish list. But the best, best estimate on timing. So I think we're okay having it in there. Remember, Rissler?
I understand that the 500,000 is a placeholder coming from the Centennial Lakes TIF for the France Avenue crossing at Gallagher and 72nd. It's also listed from the HRA Fund 72nd and France TIF. So it's down there twice. And I really do have an issue with this being included in the CIP because we haven't had any kind of public input on this. And I know you all know how I feel about it, so I don't need to keep talking about it. But this is going to make it really hard for me to vote for this.
Where, where do you see that in there? What year?
It's the first column.
First column, 2025?
Yeah, for HRA Fund 72nd.
Remember, you remember, they have to come back to us for approval.
I, I get that. But the way this whole thing has progressed leaves me very unsettled. And, you know, we spent $80,000 on a, with a contract with LHB, came back and it was all focused on the, on an underpass. That was the only answer. They also published their plan for the underpass and the sun current. They evaluated the Macy's site. I just, this is too much for me and I cannot support it as it's been moving forward. And I, I think the process leaves a lot to be desired. And I am concerned, especially since it's such a huge potential, you know, $20 million project, that there wasn't an opportunity. You know, we talk about equity, we talk about inclusion and all of that. And it's, sounds like it's going toward one company and we haven't. I don't know, there's, there's a lot about this that I am really frustrated by. So I just, that's all I'm going to say, but that's really important to me.
So I'll react to that because this isn't approving spending any money. This is providing the ability for us to do just that, of continuing to research. It's also not committing to any specific vendor. So I take issue with you saying that, like, we're not being equitable in that because this is earmarking, because we've heard loud and clear that we want to continue to get community input and have the discussion. So I, I feel very strongly that we should continue to include it. But again, we will bring anything forward and continue to have discussion about it before things progress and as things continue to progress. The issue I have with taking it off now is we could lose the opportunity to even do this if we, you know, have construction going on both sides. So I, I do think it's really important to continue investing into it from a time perspective and looking into, should we invest more from a financial perspective in 2025?
Pierce?
Yeah, I just had a question to clarify with Member Rissler. So if that project is included, you are, you're saying you would not support the CIP? You, yeah, I probably said that wrong, but.
No, that, that's fine. I, I feel it has not been vetted in a transparent kind of way. I hear what Member Agnew is saying and you do make very good points. I also have read the report and the language that says that for engineering, there may be an RFP. There was no assurance that there would be an RFP for design. And I have heard and I asked about design even at the February 2nd or the February meeting where we awarded the contract and was told with designers, we don't have to have RFPs. So that's all going through my head. I think I answered your question.
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
Your motion to adopt the 2025 through 202030 Capital Improvement Plan?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, and we're going to amend it to move Lewis Park to another year. Is that correct?
Remove it from 2025, but.
Move it from 2025. Yeah, would that one change?
Okay.
And that's acceptable to the second? You've got a motion, second, to adopt the amended Capital Improvement Plan for the city of Edina for the years 2025 through 2030. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion is stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Carried? The 2025 through 2030 amended Capital Improvement Plan for the city of Edina is adopted. Okay, now. Director Vedder? Don't let Mr. Yerim leave. We've got questions for him on this, at least I do, on this next matter.
All right, we'll seatbelt him into his chair. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we are presenting to you a potential agreement with the Edina Historical Society. Just as a reminder, for the council or for those watching, the Edina Historical Society was actually established in 1969 and they are a 501(c)(3) designated nonprofit. They were formed by the city of Edina and several residents to save the historic Cahill School Building and provide history-themed programming. They do have a mission to collect, preserve and tell Edina's story to the community and beyond. They do operate out of the Arnison Acres Park building and they program two additional ones, the Cahill School and the Grange Building. The relationship with the Edina Historical Society. For the fiscal year 2024, the city has provided them an operational stipend or funding in the amount of $20,000. The society is eligible for, and they have received in the past, legacy grants from the state of Minnesota Historical Society. They do provide the following service to the city. They archive records and materials that would be otherwise eliminated for us to be in compliance with the Minnesota Government Practice, Data Practices Act. And just to clarify, the Edina Historical Society is not a custodian at all of any of our records. They traditionally just keep those archived records that are valuable to the community that we no longer hold on to. They do catalog and preserve acquisitions into their own collection. They provide exhibits, they provide speakers to the public. And they also, a large part of their work is they provide images, research materials and historic information to the community for a lot of research and things. Prior, earlier this spring, we did go to two work sessions with the city council on this matter. We presented you kind of three options that could be done for the Historical Society. And the one was just to provide the status quo. And that was to continue to operate as they currently do. The second, a more costlier and complex operation would be for the city to absorb the Historical Society. And the third was to increase their financial support. That discussion took place on February 20th. So we did gather a vast amount of feedback from the city council and went back to the Historical Society and talked to them about that. The board then completed and submitted a more detailed strategy and operational plan that included a refinement of their vision and mission, their overall strategy and operational plan, how they would evaluate and monitor that plan, what some of their situational analysis was for the society, and did a three-year financial performa. That was submitted back to the city council this fall. We had another work session on that. Largely gathering input from the council is what led to the drafting, or actually the amendment of, of their current agreement into the one presented to you this evening. And that was to grant, continue to grant the $20,000 that's in the fiscal year 2024 allocation and then increase that to an additional $80,000 for a total of $100,000 in 2025. Maintaining that allocation through 2027 to give them a three-year window to implement their strategy and operational plan to become more self-sufficient. That maintains their 501(c)(3) status as well. Some things that we worked with the Historical Society to add to kind of address some of your concerns was they are open to and will amend their bylaws to allow you, as a city council, to appoint two non-voting student members and one regular voting member slash liaison as part of the annual commission application. As a commission liaison staff member myself, we do see the two student members often that you interview and appoint to our boards and commissions be kind of the roll up their sleeves and get to work type staff. And that's something of value to, to the Historical Society. As well as, as you had mentioned too, about your interest as a city council on that Historical Society Board was to appoint a, a voting member to that. That they would have to implement their September strategy and operational plan and provide to the city an annual report with their metrics each year. That they would consult with our city staff on integrating the, the values that we've identified of equity, engagement, sustainability, stewardship and health into their decision-making process. And also include us as city staff into the interview team for their Historical Society Executive Director position. So we did put that in the agreement that you have this evening. And then we are requesting that you approve that Edina Historical Society agreement tonight.
Questions for Director Vedder? Yes, Member Agnew.
Thank you. So my first question is, what would it cost the city to take on the load of maintaining records compliant with our data requirements?
Thank you, council, Councilmember Agnew. It would be at least double. We do not have any adequate storage right now. So we'd have to take on not only the physical storage of those, but also have to work on inventorying what that collection is. And again, we would put in a, be put in a very awkward position because there are records that we've sent to the Historical Society that we no longer would have the ability to keep. So there would be a decision process that we would have to go through to find out which ones, from a retention standpoint, do we have to get rid of? And that's the value that the Historical Society brings, is that they have that. So they aren't official records, like, you know, your council minutes or building plans. They're more of the things that the community celebrates, you know, like the, they have the blueprints from the original pool construction at Roslyn Park. Successor plans have allowed us to decommission those plans. They've kept them because they're original blueprints. They have this community value and feel. That's kind of an example of that, what we bring to them. We would be no longer able to keep that because of the Data Practices Act.
Okay. So I, I think I understood that there is a lot more value above and beyond. When you first started speaking, you said it would be about double. Can you clarify what you meant by that?
Actually, I got ahead of myself, Councilmember Agnew. I thought you were going to ask me the cost of us to absorb the Historical Society.
Okay.
So, but then your actual question was just about the records.
Yeah, do you have an estimate then for that?
I would not have the estimate that.
Okay. Then my second question is, is the proposal that's in front of us right now solely locking us into 100,000 for 2025? Or is it also locking in 26 and 27?
The proposal you have this evening is for one-year agreement for 2025.
Okay.
The discussions you had was around providing them a three-year window to improve their operations and become sustainable. So this would end up being three one-year agreements that would be presented to the city council.
Okay, thank you. I, I will be supportive of this, but the next time we talk about this, specifically for the 2026, ask, I want to know what it would cost the city to absorb the function of data and records retention compliance, especially coming off the heels of our budget conversation, right? Like, this might be one of those hard decisions that we have to make and we need to evaluate as a part of the community. Is it worth it? I'm not asking you to do that right now, but before we approach this next year, that would be my ask. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for getting ahead of myself on that.
Remember, Jackson?
Well, do you want to raise the question? It was your idea.
Go ahead. Well, we, we've got, I mean, we've just been through this difficult, difficult budget conversation and, and we all want to help the Edina Historical Society. But, you know, so the, what, the question, I guess, is for Don. Can we, if we approve this contract tonight for 100,000, could we use that ARPA money and give them a check before the 31st of December? Seems like a good use of federal ARPA money to me, where that was sent to our community by the federal government. So it, I mean, it's in part coming from our taxpayers, but it's coming from taxpayers all over the United States and it had that sort of community benefit theme to it. Could we use those ARPA funds to fund the first year of this contract?
Excuse me, Mayor, members of the city council. My understanding of the federal regulations is that this would not be an allowable use. You know, we could go back and review them again. You know, primarily what it was for was a provision. You know, primarily what it was for was a provision of government services, and those things that Scott had mentioned as part of your Phase 1 spending plan for food assistance, rent assistance, community broadband expansion. I have not seen anything in the regulations that says this would be an eligible use.
So let's just say that indirectly, based on what you said earlier, you think we might have $150,000 to $300,000 surplus as a result of absorbing this money into the general fund prior to the end of the year and using it for some approved expenses.
Correct.
We then use some of that surplus, which would be indirect ARPA funds, to fund the first year.
Probably, yeah.
Certainly, yep.
As long as we don't, you know, there's a certain fungibility of revenues here, and we can make sure that it's coming out of another.
Member Agnew, I didn't mean to cut you off. You may have had other things you wanted to ask. Okay. Others? Remember Jackson? Big sighing.
Yeah, there's a lot of sighing going on over here. It's, you know, I would say my number-one priority in the budget is asset preservation, and I just voted against that. I believe very strongly in preserving our history, but if I just voted against my number-one priority, I don't know if I can support this.
Remember Risher? Too early for thoughts? You want to?
I mean, my only, my one thought was every, but this gets into a level of complexity that might just be ridiculous, but saying, you know, since the whole idea is to launch them into self-sufficiency so they don't need to keep coming for that $100,000, that, okay, you get $100,000 to start and really launch, launch hard, and then it goes down 20% every year, and you need to find those funds so that it's built into our funding that you got to be looking for money and be on your way to self-sufficiency.
Remember Pierce? Your wisdom would be appreciated.
Question I have is the.
At 11:35.
Is the 80K, is the 80 grand, given the conversation we just had, is this included in the budget?
No.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
I can say it aloud. Mayor, members of the council, it is not included.
Okay. Thank you. So this is, and it also wouldn't be part of the 1% general fund reduction either? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So how do we pay for this? What are the, what are the, what are the options?
I don't think the ARPA idea is a terrible idea. Once we get to the point where we have an audited fund balance amount, to be able to have that conversation in the meantime, it would be an expenditure, and it would hit our probably fund balance or whatever might be the surplus, so it prevents us from having that $80,000 in potential surplus next year. So you can spend that money. We'll just, we'll figure out where to. And I think ARPA is not a terrible solution for 2025.
I agree.
And also to clarify, it's a 2025 expense, so it's not a fiscal year 2024 increased expense. So when you talk about finalizing the year, finding what the end-of-year fiscal 2024 budget is, if there is a surplus, you also talked earlier about ARPA being placed into the potential surplus. This agreement would be a fiscal year 2025 expense. So you have the ability to wait, unlike a general ARPA fund for the end of this year, and you could reconcile financials to see what that surplus is.
What's the, what's the critical timing on this?
We, the critical timing is we wanted to give the Historical Society an answer. I always say, is it a quick no or a long yes? As well as, this is a 2025 expense, so we did not want to bring it prior to you having a 2025 budget discussion.
But when will you know about, you know, if we held this until January 7th, would you know by then if we have some excess funds, that sort of?
On the ARPA side, we probably would.
On the ARPA side?
Or we'll have a more precise sense of what that, what that money's going to be, scale of it?
Correct.
How does that work with your timing, Director Vedder? And we could maybe bring Mr. Kotine up too. I know he's, he's moved up to the front row now. He may have some thoughts that he wants to share with us.
It'd be in the first quarter, so.
Yeah, we did talk with the Historical Society that traditionally, even our prior agreements are paid in the first quarter. So it would be the first quarter of 2025.
Mr. Kotine, would you come up, please? If we wait a little bit to make a decision on this, right after the, you know, in the first quarter of the year, would that work okay?
I think so. I think so.
Okay.
We've been working with it for, I've been working with it for 50 years, so. I helped organize the Historical Society in 1969. I was involved in organizing it, and I've been on the board ever since. Although in the last 10 years, I'm not a voting member, but I'm still on the board. But, no, I think it's good. At least, you know, I've been talking about this for the last 10 years.
You have been.
Yeah. 10 years ago, I proposed to this body, I proposed it for $10,000. And I asked for 40, I got 10, and then they cut me $5 to the next year, and then I went up to 15, and now it's up to 20, so it's been moving.
You're, yeah, you're an amazing individual in our community. Thank you for caring about this. All right, yeah.
The Historical Society Board will really thank you too.
Yeah, hang in there with us. We, I think we, we'll try to figure out something.
Okay, good. We're all going to be history, because history will be here.
Thank you.
Although I'm history now.
So just a question, I'm just really trying to put context around what Member Jackson's exasperation, maybe I'll call it that. So the 80 grand is a 2025 expense. And so in the context of what we talked about for budget is we will have a process to focus on 2025 levy. So this 80 grand for 2025 is subject to that work?
Well, not if you give us a specific allocation like we're talking about here.
Okay.
And then it would be, the conversation around is around what's the potential source of funds that would be consistent with what we've been talking about tonight.
Okay. Okay.
Or not interfere with what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, because I, I hear the, the asset preservation, asset preservation, and I don't necessarily think of it as, I do think of it as a deference, but we will address that issue at a later date, and it may cost more. And so I was just trying to understand here, if we're going to ask you, Manager Neil, to do work throughout the year to hit a lower number for 2026, would this be on the table or not? And I'm hearing you say it's, we'd be earmarking it now, so kind of saying, well, this is quote-unquote "safe."
Yeah, for 2025, I'm getting the feeling that you want to earmark it for them. For going forward in 2026, I think we're going to be looking at a number of changes to our kind of historic budget methodologies and choices, so it could be on the table then.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I think we're at manager comments. No, we're not going to approve the agreement. We're going to kind of punt until the first quarter. And we're going to look at, Don's going to let us know in the first part of January what we've got to work with potentially from an ARPA, indirect ARPA standpoint.
Correct.
Yeah, or any other budget surplus.
Yeah.
Yeah, we really want to think about how to use it. Okay.
Manager's comments for tonight, Your Honor, is we didn't get to quite get to the end of our discussion around the legislative platform earlier this evening. However, when Ari and Zoe and I went into the break room to kind of work through it, I think we're not as far away from this being completed as I thought we were when we were in the room. So what we would like to do is to produce a red-line version of the document and put in, you know, we've got a number of changes that you've all kind of consented to. There really aren't very many that you haven't consented to yet that I think you probably will. So we'd like to prepare a red-line version and get it out to you and kind of get it approved unofficially. That's just as meaningful to our legislators as if we take a formal action on the document. So we can still do that, but I think we'll do that over the next week or so and collect your input. If there's more input, then great, we'll slow it down, but I think we're pretty close to being done.
Excellent. Member Jackson, we're talking about after the work session, thinking, you know, it wouldn't be the worst of all cases if we work through our final legislative agenda with our legislators. And because they may tell us, well, don't waste your time on this one, or really put your horsepower behind this idea. But anyway, I think the method you're following here, give us a red line to work from. It's a good next step.
Okay, that's what we'll do. That's all I've got.
Okay. Remember Risher, you got any juice left in the tank? You got anything you want to talk about?
I'm empty. Thank you.
You usually have a couple of things. Remember Jackson?
Well, I didn't prepare anything, except I do want to have a discussion about community comment. We've seen community comment turned into a political arena, a political forum. It's not a political forum. It's a chance for the public to come tell us what their lived experience is in the city and what we can do to improve that.
Tell the council.
Tell the council, not the public, and to broadcast it. So I think it's a very important part of our work, but I don't think it needs to be broadcast. And I'd like to see in 2025 that we have that off-camera. And before the city council meeting starts, because it's addressing the council, it's not addressing the public. And if people want to be broadcast, they can go on cable TV. We have a wonderful service and a studio they can use and put a program together. But I don't see that we have to produce that on their behalf. So I'd like to see that come forward in January.
Well, let's put that on as a discussion item somewhere. I don't like. Remember Pierce?
I don't have as much energy as Member Jackson, so I will pass. Thank you.
No one else is dressed quite as festively tonight, so I just want to wish everyone happy holidays. And I know I'll see you again on Thursday, which is kind of like tomorrow. So maybe I'll save the truly well wishes on the year until then.
Look forward to seeing your attire on Thursday morning. It's interesting. I had written down that same notion that is, what's the purpose of public comment, you know, and have that conversation? And who is it for? Is it the benefit of the council or the benefit of the public? Let's have that conversation. I know, yeah, Eden Prairie, for example, where you were doing it for years. It's done at 6:30.
Right.
And it's off-camera.
Yep. So there's a work session just like here, a work session that goes from 5:30 to 6:30. The council would come upstairs, get into the chambers, they would do public, they would do community comments, and at 7 o'clock, that was done, and the meeting started. And that was off, so that was off-camera, and the cameras came on, and the meeting started at 7.
Okay, all right, that's all I had.
Oh, don't you have to say something about that?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I had it all out here too. So, yeah, thanks, Member Jackson. Remember Risher, Member Pierce interviewed several entities and individuals that are in the business of providing guidance to city councils and assessments of city managers through the performance review methodology that they have. And Members Pierce and Risher selected a company led by somebody named Charles Weinstein. It's called Ethical Leaders in Action. And he interviewed the senior staff members and all the city council members. And from all of those, all that input, provided a performance review that is confidential. But I have, as a mayor, an obligation to report out to the general public as kind of a summary of the findings. And so the purpose of the appraisal was twofold, as set forth by Mr. Weinstein. It was to assess whether Scott Neal is performing satisfactorily as Edina City Manager and provide Mr. Neal with thoughtful feedback on his strengths, areas of competency, and any areas for potential improvement based on the perspective of the council and senior staff. And based upon the survey and the interview input from the majority of the council members, all senior staff members, I would say that believe Scott is meeting or exceeding expectations overall as the Edina City Manager. The appraisal revealed that Mr. Neal has demonstrated some areas of distinctive strengths and some areas of satisfactory performance, along with some other areas where the council seeks improvement in practices and performance of the city manager and staff. Overall, the appraisal identified staff leadership and management, creative thinking, problem-solving, and high-level commitment to be among Mr. Neal's distinctive strengths. We also identified a range of general competencies such as risk management, financial management, support for the council. We also identified some areas where some of the council members seek improvement in performance, and those included improvement in responsiveness to resident concerns and also some aspects of communication and support for the council. And those were the general areas that we covered. We want to make sure that information was included to present to the council that supports decision-making, that's factually accurate, and make sure staff provides the council with contextual information concerning budgetary options and decisions. And it is, I think, worthwhile noting that we learned, I think that some staff members have expressed concern about their overall workload facing their departments and them as leaders of those departments. And there is a risk of employee burnout and overwork. And so we note that as well in that assessment. So I think that is sufficient for Minnesota statutory purposes to provide that summary of the conversation we had with him last evening and with Mr. Weinstein as well, and all council members who are present. So that concludes that report out on Mr. Neal's performance evaluation, and we could now think about a motion to adjourn.
So moved. A sec.
We had a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Agnew, that we adjourn the meeting of the Edina City Council while it is still December 17th, 2024. Any further discussion, those in favor of adjournment of the city council meeting this Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We stand adjourned.